Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is the December 7th, 2020 Bloomington City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and start the meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and as I said, good evening and welcome. Welcome to every, all the members of the public watching this evening. Important meeting this evening. I hope you're joining us and tuning in for, as I said, this important meeting, which includes our truth and taxation hearing. So we're glad to have you here with us this evening. As we get started, Ms. Christensen, if you could please call the role of the city council.
Thank you. Councilmember Baloga?
Present.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Coulter?
Present.
Councilmember Martin?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
And Mayor Bussey?
Present. And just a note for everyone, Councilmember Lowman is not well, not feeling well this evening, so he's not going to be joining us. So we have six members of the Bloomington City Council on board this evening. With that, move to item number four on our agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. Council, I'm sure you've had a chance to take a look at the agenda. One change that I would like to propose to this evening's agenda is item 610 in the consent agenda. We did not get the documents finalized that we need to have for item 610 to be finalized and to be approved. And so what I would like to do is pull that from the consent agenda and hold it until a date unknown at this time. So I'd like to pull out item 6.10 off the consent agenda as a change to the agenda. Council, are there any further changes?
Mayor Bussey, can I just make one statement? I believe that the date was certain for December 21st.
So if we are certain for December 21st, that is what we will do. We'll do a date certain on December 21st, bring it back at that time. So remove item 6.10 on the agenda, bring it back on December 21st. Additional changes, council? If not, I would move tonight's agenda with the change as stated.
So, Mayor Baloga?
Second, Martin.
We have a motion by Councilmember Baloga and a second by Councilmember Martin to adopt our agenda as amended. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. We do have an agenda for this evening. Item five on our agenda is our introductory items, and item 5.1 is a COVID-19 organization and public health update. And we have asked Dr. Nick Kelly to join us at the first meeting of every month to give us an update of the status of COVID-19 in the city of Bloomington and within the organization of the city of Bloomington. So, good evening, Dr. Kelly, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. The United States remains on a dangerous trajectory with COVID-19 cases. Yesterday, the CDC reported 2,310 new deaths and 206,992 new cases of COVID-19. We've now lost over 280,135 fellow Americans to COVID-19. That dangerous trajectory is particularly true in the Midwest, where multiple states, including Minnesota, are reporting the highest numbers of COVID-19 cases per million residents in the country. Here in Bloomington, we're seeing the same slight downward trajectory in cases that the state is seeing. It's unclear if this reduction will be sustained or if we will see a surge in cases this week as a result of the Thanksgiving travel and gatherings. One thing is very clear: Our current extremely high level of cases in the community is going to make the next several weeks challenging. November saw the highest number of cases, 2,248, hospitalizations, 119, and deaths, 23 in Bloomington since this pandemic started. We know that hospitalizations and deaths are lagging indicators, so we expect those numbers to continue to go up, given our current high case numbers. For each hospitalization, you have the added challenge of a loved one being hospitalized without family present. The same holds true for most deaths of a loved one with minimal contact with a family member, and often a prolonged stay in the hospital. This is followed by a COVID-19-compliant funeral, a brief goodbye, and the concerns that an event may have caused others to get sick. Words really don't begin to describe the pain and suffering these families are going through. Unfortunately, we know more of our neighbors are going to experience this pain in the coming weeks. All of us are being impacted by COVID-19, but we're not being impacted equally. The median age of case is 38; for hospitalization, it is 63; and for deaths, it is 84. COVID-19 is continuing to impact our older adults profoundly. Many of our older adults are also dealing with the social isolation as they take steps to protect themselves. We continue to see a disproportional impact in our BIPOC community from COVID-19. We see this for cases, hospitalizations, and death. Just to be clear, when I say disproportional impact, I mean we're seeing an impact above what we expect to be given, what we know about COVID-19. Public health will continue to focus on how we support everyone in our community, especially our older adults and our BIPOC community. While our current reality is challenging, there's a lot to look forward to right now. We have two vaccines we expect to be impacting operations in the coming weeks. It is likely by the next update I'll give you that we will have two vaccines being administered to Tier 1A populations in Minnesota, healthcare workers, and long-term care residents. These vaccines work incredibly well and are safe. It's astonishing to think that we're talking about a vaccine for COVID-19 already. That's an amazing win for science. Manufacturers were able to get a jumpstart in developing a COVID-19 vaccine because they were able to use research and vaccine technology developed over the last decades. Usually manufacturers have to wait until a vaccine they know is going to be approved and start producing it. The federal government stepped in this time and paid for the production of vaccines, so as soon as they are approved, they will be ready to be used. So the supply of vaccine is already starting to show up in places. Expecting the approval tomorrow of the Pfizer vaccine from the FDA. The same safety expectations we have for all vaccines apply to COVID-19 vaccines. They have to be safe, pure, and effective. The mRNA vaccines that we're looking at seeing licensed or authorized under the emergency use authorization process are incredible. I am looking forward to seeing their impact in the community and looking forward to getting it when I am allowed to get it based on our prioritization. These vaccines will be another tool in our toolbox and our light at the end of the tunnel. It'll take some time for us to roll out the vaccine to everyone who wants it, so we have to stay vigilant with our practices of social distancing, masking, and handwashing for a while longer. Vaccines are the exit strategy for this pandemic, and as we prepare for that exit, we need to be diligent to make sure as few of our neighbors as possible get COVID in the coming months.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. I think your words there to stay vigilant and to maintain what we've been doing despite that light at the end of the tunnel, to maintain the face coverings, social distancing, handwashing, all that we've been doing so far is just going to be so important as we head into the next 90 days, as we move through this winter, through this very dark time. And I agree completely that we've got a possibility, we've got that light out there, but it's going to take a while to get there, and it's going to be a difficult time until we do get there. Council, any questions for Dr. Kelly this evening? Seeing no questions, I will say thank you, Dr. Kelly, for the update. Appreciate the information once again, and we will see you after the New Year. So thanks very much for the update.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to move on to item 5.2 on our agenda, which is the affirming emergency actions undertaken by our city manager. And as you probably know, if you've tuned in, we have reinstituted an emergency declaration here in the city of Bloomington as a result of COVID-19, which basically is more administrative than anything. It allows us to move more quickly and more efficiently and a bit more nimbly in terms of our city operations and purchasing and other operations details, and specifically some of the things that Mr. Verbrughe is going to share with us this evening. Mr. Verbrughe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Very little to actually report, other than the fact that we replicated some of what we did in the spring in closing city facilities to the public, except for an appointment-only basis. We directed employees to continue working from home. We had, over the past couple months, a number of employees that had started returning to the workplace more frequently, and so employees were directed back to work from home for those who could. And we took the additional measure of requiring employees to wear face masks at all times while inside a city facility or when working outside if six feet of physical distance couldn't be maintained. This was an extra step beyond what we did earlier in the year. We felt the increasing caseload and the concern for safety of our employees warranted that action. Those are the only actions to report this week, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, and we will continue to bring this type of resolution back as long as the order is in place whenever we are taking additional actions.
Council, any questions on item 5.2, the emergency actions undertaken under our emergency Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Verbrughe. Thank you for that update. Let's move on to item 5.3, which is our proclamation. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Manderscheid, question?
Mayor, it's a resolution, so we could look for a motion at this point.
I apologize. I apologize. We do need a resolution to affirm the emergency actions undertaken by the city manager.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilmember Coulter. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilmember Carter to approve the resolution affirming the emergency actions undertaken by the city manager. Council, any further discussions? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid, for keeping me in check. I appreciate it. Now moving on to item 5.3, which is our proclamation for this evening. It's a proclamation for Human Rights Day, which is December 10th, 2020. And I will read the proclamation and then talk about it just a little bit. And the proclamation reads this: "Human Rights Day, December 10th, 2020. Whereas, the city of Bloomington joins our nation in recognizing December 10th, 2020 as Human Rights Day. And whereas, Bloomington recognizes the importance of acknowledging the diversity that exists in our community as we strive for autonomous participation in our community affairs. And whereas, the devastating impact of prejudice can be eliminated through the efforts of our city in promoting human rights awareness. And whereas, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights asserts all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. And whereas, the designation of a special Human Rights Day serves to remind us that basic human rights must be made available to all people. And whereas, the city of Bloomington Human Rights Commission is celebrating 52 years of aiding and advising the city council in ensuring all citizens have equal opportunities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Tim Bussey, Mayor of the city of Bloomington, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim December 10th, 2020 as Human Rights Day and ask all residents to continue their efforts in making Bloomington a model for fair and equal rights for all persons. Sign this day, the 7th of December, 2020." So, December 10th. You may wonder, why December 10th? Why is that Human Rights Day? It was chosen as in commemoration of December 10th, 1948, which was when the United Nations General Assembly adopted and proclaimed the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And that Universal Declaration of Human Rights came directly from the experience of World War II, as you might imagine. It represents the first global expression of rights to which all human beings are inherently entitled. And the city of Bloomington Human Rights Commission annually observes December 10th as the anniversary of its award presentation, and invites all residents to continue to work toward making Bloomington a model for fair and equal rights for all persons. So we have the proclamation, and we will make sure that our folks in our Human Rights Commission get that again this year. And with that, it moves actually very nicely into item 5.4 this evening, which is the presentation of our 2020 Omar Banderood Human Rights Award. And the Human Rights Commission is going to be joining us this evening for our 2020 Omar Banderood Human Rights Award. So you may not know that the Human Rights Commission has been serving the city of Bloomington for 52 years. Think about that. 52 years. Back in the late '60s, the city of Bloomington had the foresight to adopt, to put together a Human Rights Commission. And our commission advises the city council, ensuring that all citizens have equal opportunities in employment, in housing, public accommodation, public services, and education, and in other affairs as they see fit that affect the social well-being of the community. And our award that we're going to be talking about this evening, the Omar Banderood Award, is named after the commission's first chairperson, named Omar Banderood. It was first awarded in 1974 and has been presented annually since that time. Tonight, we're going to be presenting two awards. The 2020 recipients are Derringer Funches and Karim Law, the law firm here in Bloomington. I'd like to invite our Human Rights Commission Chairperson, Molly Bosu, to join me for this presentation and to introduce our recipients. Chairperson Bosu, good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. The Omar Banderood Human Rights Award is presented annually by the Human Rights Commission to an individual, organization, or business that has made significant contribution to ensuring the human rights of people in Bloomington. Tonight, it is my honor to recognize two 2020 award recipients on behalf of the Human Rights Commission. Our first award recipient is Derringer Funches, who goes far beyond his role as a paraprofessional at Valley View Middle School by serving as a mentor and advocate for youth. He is a champion of anti-racism by leading courageous conversations with staff at the school and is working with district-wide leadership to promote anti-racist change in all Bloomington schools. And our second award recipient is a business, Karim Law, whose pro bono legal work assists immigrant families seeking reunification and advocates for immigrants in need of humanitarian protection. In addition, Karim Law works to guide immigrant families on their path to citizenship and provides a legal platform for ensuring equal access to employment. We would now like to show an interview with Derringer Funches and Karim Law highlighting their work in human rights.
One of the things that I'm trying to do is be a voice, show positivity, and show that for our young males in this building, our young African-American males, that you can be a positive piece, you can have an impact, and definitely not be afraid. I think the biggest thing for me is I look at myself as a role model. I am a father first. I have three children, and I have a 19-year-old son. I try to be a positive fixture, not just in his life, but in to those who I come in contact with. While here, I interact with the students, and I try to lead by example. It's not very easy at times, and with the last six months, it has definitely been a new experience, not just for them, but for myself as well. After the George Floyd case, I felt I needed to speak up, not just for myself, but for my son. I needed for him to be able to be comfortable as a young African-American male in society today. I wanted him to not be hampered or hindered in speaking up. And so the best way I felt that could happen is by me being able to speak up for him or more so speak up for myself. I went to the administration of my building and ran some ideas by them, and they supported me with that and thus gave me the confidence to speak up. And there are things that Bloomington Public Schools will be doing in the future to better make people feel more accepted, whether it's with the staff, whether it's students, and as the community as a whole. I have the opportunity to dispel myths and stereotypes that society has put on black men, and I'm not trying to be a martyr, but what I am trying to do is show that I can make a difference. And if I can be a positive piece for our young men and a positive influence with our young women in the building, then I will continue to do that because I want people to see not just the good in people, but the positives, even though we all have weaknesses, our weaknesses can be a strength as well because that is how we get better. When I did hear that I had been nominated and that I was receiving this award, it's very humbling. I have been working with youth for the better part of my life, and to be recognized for my efforts, it means a lot. I'm very honored that the people that I do work with value what I do bring. This is not something that I take lightly. It is a responsibility, and it is something that I definitely, although receiving this award is not something that I'm going to stop doing, I will continue trying to be the best me, the best person that I can be.
We do immigration law, and our clients are families that are trying to be reunited. We represent employers that sponsor work visas for their personnel. We help longtime permanent residents of the United States become citizens of this country. And we also help individuals who are facing possible harm or hardships if they are returned to their home country to be able to potentially stay here. I have been doing this work for 28 years. For the last 25 years, we've been working here in Bloomington, and I will tell you that we've seen lots of changes in immigration over those years, and there isn't a day I come to work where I don't feel like there is something new and exciting and potentially stressful to greet us, but we do enjoy the work we do here, and we work hard.
The reason why, myself, while I'm passionate about this type of work, and specifically immigration law, is that the type of work that I do oftentimes is work with asylees and individuals that are coming to the United States in very desperate situations. And that work is, not only is it hard, but it's very rewarding when it goes in favor of the individual. The reason that I'm also passionate about what I do is that I work with a dynamic group of people here at Karim Law that are also passionate about what they do. And that passion is definitely contagious, and when an individual wins a case or is successful in being able to stay here or bring their family here, we all celebrate. We do this work because we feel that also that we're supporting the medical workers. Many of our clients and many of the immigrant community are medical workers, but they're also bus drivers and their teachers and their IT professionals that allow, you know, people to be able to work at home. And so, you know, the work that we do is, just has a ripple effect on to the rest of the community around us. And so although COVID has slowed things and made it different, it certainly hasn't changed our passion for what we do here.
Honestly, I feel very humbled by the city of Bloomington recognizing what we are doing here. The idea that immigrants are deserving of an equal platform to be entering our workforce and to be together with their families, creating strong families and strong communities together, and our city of Bloomington valuing the work we do is really rewarding, and it fulfills us. And the people that come here to work every day, they come here with a passion for helping others, and to recognize that through our Omar Banderood Award is such a great reward for us.
It's humbling, of course. We're grateful for the recognition to our immigrant community, for sure.
Thank you for that wonderful highlight of the work of these two well-deserving individuals. At this time, Derringer Funches will now say a few words.
Excuse me. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and city councilmembers. I would like to thank the city's Human Rights Commission for selecting me for this prestigious honor, the Omar Banderood Human Rights Award. I am deeply humbled and honored. I want to thank Nick Volko for recommending me. In addition, my building principal, Megan Wilrich, Ashley Madro, Assistant Principal, and for believing in me and supporting me. My fiancee, Bridgette, who pushed me this summer, and without her nudging, I would have kind of sat back. My children play an important part for me, like I said, my son and my daughters, mine and Chloe. They inspire me, and not to mention the numerous young people that I work with in the district. Over, as I said in the piece, the last six, seven months, it's been extremely hard for everyone, but we've had the opportunity to see change in a lot of areas, a lot of people. And that is important for me, and I think it will be important for our young generation coming up in the future. I'm just grateful, and I, as I said, this is not something that I take lightly. It's a very important recognition, and I just want to say, you know, I'm being recognized for something that I've done for the better part of my life. From day one, this is how I've been, and I will continue to be this way until I'm done. I'm dedicated to working with our young people, and I value what I'm able to impart. And I'm hoping that my example leads others to, more so our young people, to want to do better, look to do better, and not be afraid. Last thing, I'm hopeful that change can and will happen, which will be beneficial for all. The actions that people take need to be real and more than just lip service. Let us all come together, be willing to listen, learn, and grow. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Derringer. On top of everything else with this pandemic, the fact that you can't be here with us this evening, that you can't hear the round of applause that you so firmly deserve is disappointing, but know that everybody is clapping for you right now and are very appreciative and very happy that you, in fact, you didn't sit back this summer, that you stepped forward. And it's because people like you step forward that change takes place. And I appreciate that you had the courage and you had the dedication and you had the conviction to step forward when you did, and that you do every day with your students at Valley View, and that you do within our community of Bloomington. So when we get a chance, this is the plaque that you will be getting and can display, there it is, you can display it in your office, and I hope you do proudly, and I hope whenever somebody asks you about it, when one of your students sees it and asks you about it, you can tell them it's because you do outstanding work, you do outstanding service in human rights in the city of Bloomington. So thank you very much, Derringer Funches. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And at this time, Leslie Karim of Karim Law will now say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and city councilmembers. You know, congratulations to Derringer on his impressive work and being such a positive role model for his students and being a dedicated educator. and being a dedicated educator. On behalf of all of us at Karam Law, I really feel inspired by this award. Over 25 years ago, I picked Bloomington as the community to open my immigration service office, and we presently serve over 500 immigrant families or their employers each year. When I started my day-to-day, I was driving past the Mall of America at that intersection where they have the American flag, and I noticed that it was at half-mast, and it reminded me of the fact that we are on the anniversary today of the Pearl Harbor attack, which really did trigger our entry into World War II. And for many of our people that we represent, many are immigrants that come from places of war or civil unrest or insecurity. And it's not just a thing of the past for our population of immigrants. It is a real and present danger that their families live with. Immigration has never been easy, but I can't remember a more difficult time to be an immigrant than it is right now. And by giving a voice to those people who need a safe haven and those who seek legal access to jobs, regardless of their color, their religion, their native language, or where they come from, or even who they love, we know we're making good on the American promise. On behalf of Karam Law, I'm honored that we received this recognition from the city of Bloomington, and I feel proud that our community stands with these values, which in turn is going to make an even better community for those who live and work here. Finally, I want to give a shout out to my workmates, who I assume are tapping into this event virtually, and also to our families, who give us so much support and enable us as we strive to do the best we can at advancing human rights in our community here in Bloomington.
Well, thank you, Leslie, and congratulations to Karam Law and to your entire team there. I know it's absolutely and certainly a team effort, and I am glad that 25 years ago you did choose Bloomington as a place to open your law office. I know that we're a better place for it and appreciate the work that you've done. Again, here is the plaque that we will be delivering to you, and frankly, after watching that short piece, your office looks like it could be an international museum of art. There's some wonderful art pieces there, and I think, I hope that you enjoy and display this as proudly as some of those beautiful pieces that you include in, that we saw in the video piece earlier. But thank you so very much for the work that you do. Thank you for the work that you do for our immigrant community, and thanks for the work that you do to show that Bloomington is a welcoming place, that it is a place where people can find a home, that it's a place where people can build a family, build a career, build a life, and that there are resources within this community to help them in that endeavor. And you're an important part of that, and we do greatly appreciate it. So, congratulations to Karam Law, congratulations, Leslie, congratulations to your entire team. Very well done. Thank you so very much, and look forward to being able to give you a round of applause in person at some point as well. But thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
So Molly, anything to wrap up with, or thank you to Molly, or to the entire Human Rights Commission. You guys do great work as well, and I know that work went into...
Well, we are inspired by, no, thank you, thank you. Yeah, we just want to say once again, congratulations on behalf of the entire Human Rights Commission. We are inspired by all of the work that you guys do. Me personally, as a teacher myself, and especially as a teacher working with many immigrant families, the work that you both do is near and dear to my heart, and I appreciate just being able to hear you guys' stories and be inspired by everything that you do. So, thank you so much, and congratulations.
Absolutely. Congratulations, Derenger, and to Karam Law. Thanks so very much. And again, our thanks to our Human Rights Commission that, for 52 years, has done this type of work here in the city of Bloomington and recognizes the great work that goes on in the city of Bloomington. So, Molly, please pass our thanks on to the rest of the commission members, and thank you for your leadership on that commission, and look forward to seeing you again after the new year. Thank you very much. Counsel, anything to add to this? As I said, it's always a good one, always one that I enjoy. It's much more fun in person, but we'll get back to that eventually. We can move on. We're going to move on on our agenda to one of our timed items, and on the agenda, item 8.1 is up next, which is our Truth in Taxation Public Hearing, which deals with our 2021 property tax levy and our general fund budget. As I said, this is a public hearing. We've got a presentation we're going to be hearing from our budget manager, Carrie Carlson, and then we'll open it up as a public hearing. We've been discussing this over the past couple of meetings within the council, and we'll be looking to move this forward this evening, if at all possible. But I will turn it over now to Ms. Carlson. Good evening, Ms. Carlson, and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So, this is the presentation for the 2021 General Fund Budget and Tax Levy for our annual Truth in Taxation Public Hearing. COVID-19 has had a major impact on the city's budget, as it has significantly impacted the hospitality and entertainment industry, which has meant millions of dollars not being generated from local lodging and admission tax revenues. We are forecasting $5 million less in local lodging and admission tax revenue in 2021. We have taken numerous steps to reduce the original 2021 budget request. For example, we have reduced staff positions. We have wage freezes budgeted in 2021 for all employees, except for the police officer and supervisor unions, who settled their 2021 contracts before the pandemic. We've carefully analyzed city services for efficiencies and reduced budgeted expenses where possible. We are drawing down fund reserves where available. And then in conjunction with that, earlier this spring, as you know, the council appointed a community budget advisory committee of nine residents who had not or have knowledge of municipal budgets and city government. And the committee met regularly with staff from June through October, pretty much weekly, on Wednesday evenings, with all of the meetings publicly televised and recorded, and they studied the city's budget and services. They undertook numerous community engagement initiatives and provided monthly updates to the city council on their progress. And the committee provided their final report to the council with three budget scenario options at the November 9th council meeting. Then the city council reviewed the budget options during last month's study meetings and gave city staff direction for the 2021 tax levy and budget. The proposed 2021 tax levy and budget has four core values. It honors the work of the Community Budget Advisory Committee and the perspective of residents impacted by these decisions. For example, the committee was focused on preserving the core functions of government with special emphasis on not making reductions that would impact public safety. It limits the impact of property tax increases during a year that is going to financially challenge many taxpayers in our community. It minimizes the impact of city service reductions to the greatest extent possible, recognizing that many people in the community rely on these services as necessary for quality of life, health, and safety. And it considers the implications and impacts on future budget years for both the taxpayer and the organization. With those principles in mind, the budget recommendation to the city council can be summarized with these four points. A property tax levy increase of 2.75% for 2021, the majority of budget reductions for city services that were included from the Community Budget Advisory's Scenario A, with some additions and subtractions from city staff and council. It designates an amount for tax levy stabilization from the Strategic Priorities Fund as a balancing strategy to buffer tax levy increases, and we are projecting a conceptual 2022 property tax levy increase of 0%. This slide is comparing the 2020 General Fund Budget to the 2021 budget. There is a column on the right to highlight differences, and you can see that we are projecting $5.3 million less in lodging and admission tax revenues. And also, you can see that the majority of the department expenditures that are on the bottom have been reduced. I want to point out that the main reason for the increase in program and grant revenue, as well as a corresponding increase in community services expenditures, is due to moving the Public Health Special Revenue Fund to the General Fund, so that all public health revenues and expenditures are in one place going forward. But the net effect of that move into the General Fund is $0. Here is a chart demonstrating the breakout of the General Fund revenues. So, you can see in blue, the majority is made up of property taxes at 72% of General Fund revenues. The red section is the lodging and admission taxes, and it's only 6% for the 2021 budget, which is down 13% due to the impacts of COVID. Here's a similar chart, but for the General Fund expenditures, and approximately 60% of the expenditures are for police, fire, and public works. So, you've got police and fire in blue at 42% of the budget, and for public works in red there at 17%. This chart displays all of the categories of the 2021 proposed property tax levy. It is comparing the 2020 tax levy to the 2021 tax levy. And the levy is broken out by non-debt service at the top and debt service at the bottom. And I'll point out that the debt service funded by this property tax levy is staying flat between 2020 and 2021. The General Fund is the biggest component of the non-debt service property tax levy. And then the remaining amounts in the property tax levy help to fund the Communications Division, Removal Disease Trees, the Fire Pension Fund, the Aquatics Fund, which is the beach and the pool, the Art Center, Golf Fund, the Ice Garden, and construction projects in the Normandale Lake Tax Abatement District. And on the right is the monthly impact for a median value home, and the impact is $1.37 per month. And on this slide, it shows that $1.37 per month, the recommended 2.75% tax levy that's highlighted in yellow for the city is a reduction from the 5% preliminary tax levy that was set by the council in September. And for the median value home, as I said, that is $1.37 month increase for the city taxes. But this slide is showing the impacts of the other taxing jurisdictions. So, you can see for the county, Hennepin County has adopted a flat or 0%, no increase preliminary tax levy. The Bloomington School District adopted a 2.8 preliminary tax levy increase. And so, when you're including all of the taxing jurisdictions, a 2.75% increase by the city, and that's highlighted at the bottom with all of the taxing jurisdictions, is actually an overall reduction of $4.23 per month for the median value home. And that overall reduction, as I said, is due to the impact of the county's levy. And then also this year, as we're working through budgets, we have been consistently analyzing the effect of tax levy increase to a median value apartment, recognizing that a portion of the rent is going towards the property taxes. But we also worry the potential impact to renters. And due to the market value increase of 7.3% for multifamily homes for median value apartment for pay 2021, the share of the property tax levy to a renter is estimated to be an increase of $6.58 a month with all of the taxing jurisdictions. And this is an example of tax impacts in specific assessing districts across the city. We've expanded that last slide, just knowing that not everyone in Bloomington lives in a median value home. So, these are examples from the Assessing Department, showing different assessing districts in District 1, 2, 3, and 4. And what you can see at the bottom with the total tax impact is that it varies greatly across the city. It is impacted by the market valuation, property valuation, and then also how it changed from the previous year. This slide is a projection of our 2022 conceptual levy. This is at 0%. And so, we anticipate maintaining and operating a service level in 2022, similar to 2021. And of course, variations in revenue forecasting and changing operational priorities may impact the 2022 General Fund Budget. However, at this time, it does look reasonable to forecast a budget that can be effectively met with no change or minimal change to the tax levy, so 0%. The market value adjustments for pay 2022 are expected to see roughly a 6% increase for the median value home, and as much as a 10% decline for commercial industrial properties. So, this will result in a tax-based shift, placing a greater burden on single-family homeowners. This is for 2022. So, setting the expectation of little or no levy change in 2022 will hopefully ease the minds of property taxpayers who may be still experiencing financial and economic hardship due to the pandemic. So, these last two slides I have here are just sharing information about the state of Minnesota's property tax refund program. And I just want to point out, it's available to both homeowners and renters, and that the due date is August 15th, but you can file up to one year after the due date. And this next slide has tables for homeowners and renters, showing the amount of refunds that can be available based on income and amount of property taxes or rent paid. And that concludes my presentation, and we would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, we've seen the line share that information previously, but do you have any questions or clarifications from Ms. Carlson before we head into the public hearing? Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you. Carrie, thanks for the presentation. You did a good and succinct job of presenting where we are with the presentation, which is much appreciated. The only item that I have is a question regarding the funding of motor vehicle. We spoke last week during the study meeting about funding the motor vehicle for at least six months, but because the numbers don't change on motor vehicle from what it was to today's presentation, it's hard to tell what the plan is. So, could you inform us of what the current plans are, or possibly pass the baton off to the council or the city manager or the assistant city manager? Thank you.
Ms. Carlson or Mr. Verbrugge, who would like to take that one on?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'll go ahead. So, the recommendation from the city manager is that we maintain the operation of the motor vehicle office through the end of March. That will allow us the time to coordinate with the state on the process to see if there's an interested party that is wanting to come into the area and continue to serve the community, rather than just shutting the office and then working through the process. I don't know that that period of time is going to be sufficient to have a handover within, you know, little time period, so there's no interruption of service if indeed there's an interested party. But what it does do is it allows us a good period of time to work through that process. The concern that we had to Councilmember Beloga's question about going out six months was, frankly... was frankly, our ability to keep the operation running, recognizing that this decision will have an impact on our employees at motor vehicle, and knowing that the operation will be closing, if indeed that is the decision of the council, that they are likely going to be pursuing other employment opportunities. And we may be in a situation where we wouldn't be able to staff the office at some point if we had that long of a timeframe. So we think the three months is a good compromise in that regard. It gives our staff enough time to pursue other options, and it gives us time to pursue the process with the state of Minnesota. And by the way, the financial aspect of it, Councilmember Beloga, you're correct, is not reflected in this, in this presentation because the motor vehicle fund operation is in its own fund. There was tax subsidy that was coming through the general levy into that fund. We do not have that included in the levy for 2021. And we believe there's enough reserve, enough working capital within that fund balance that we'll be able to operate the operation until the time that it would close, if that's the decision. And I guess I can answer any other questions might have that's clear.
You've answered the question for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief follow-up to that, because I am sure I'm going to get asked about it, and I'm sure others will as well. Could you, city manager, could you maybe walk through what, I mean, what happens on, I guess it would so much be March 31st as April 1st of next year? You know, if, I mean, I think you're probably correct in saying that it's, that's not necessarily going to be enough time for a complete handover. So if, if there is, say, somebody who at least we progress in bringing forward, who can offer these services, or if there is not, sort of what comes next, I guess, is the, is the question I'm asking.
Thank you, Councilmember Coulter, Mayor and councilmembers. The, the majority of our transactions are related to motor vehicle services and includes tab renewals is a good portion of that work. So if the, if the office were to close, tab renewals is a service that is available online. So the thing that people come to the motor vehicle office for, I think most frequently because tab renewal is an annual exercise, is available online. The other services that may not be available online, especially related to driver's license services such as name change or renewal of the driver's license, issuing of enhanced, the enhanced driver's license or real ID, those you have to go in person for. And the nearby service centers in Adana at Southdale is operated by Hennepin County, also in Burnsville operated by Dakota County. They provide those in-person services there. Those services, I would also remind folks are not an annual exercise for the most part. They tend to be based on a, you know, some sort of a change in condition, or if you're getting just a new identification. So it's not, it's not an annual service that most people are needing. The Richfield Motor Vehicle Office has a limited service. So they do, they do provide the tab renewal and motor vehicle services. They also issue duplicate licenses, replacing a lost license or an address change. So that available is also accessible in Richfield. So there are nearby options for customers in the event that the motor vehicle office in Bloomington closes for, for all of the services that we provide.
Thank you. And then, sorry, one last follow-up here. I guess the other piece I'm wondering is, what if, let's say hypothetically that, that no one is able to come, no one comes forward and, and, you know, for whatever reason, the motor vehicle's office closes. What, I mean, what is the next step from sort of our perspective as the city council or from city governance? Because I, I mean, I, I guess my question is, are we going to have a chance to sort of reevaluate this decision? Or by adopting this budget here tonight, are we saying, come April 1st of next year, if nobody else is doing it, motor vehicles close it?
Mayor and council, Councilmember Coulter. Yes, that would, that would be the anticipation. So the process, and I've shared this before, but it's good that if people are tuning in, they hear it again. And Chris Wilson, the Assistant City Manager, can share more if I don't have all of the high points here. We would issue, we would send a letter to the state of Minnesota, letting them know that we are not, that we are abandoning our deputy registrar designation. At that point, the first thing the state would do is contact the county to see if the county were interested in taking the service over or providing service within the community. And if the county declines, then they would make it available to a private operator. If a private operator wants to establish a deputy registrar and receive the designation, they have to receive a waiver from any of the operations within a 10-mile radius. Because we have a high concentration of people in and around the area served by these service centers, there are a number within 10 miles, and they would have to consent to that operator. If they, if they do consent, then a private operator could establish a business here. If they don't consent, then they probably wouldn't receive the deputy registrar. And I've been making calls and having conversation with our colleagues in these other communities just to make them aware that we are in this process. And that, that may be a request that comes across their desk at some point.
Thank you. I think I mostly just wanted to make it clear for, for folks at home watching, so, so they understood exactly what the decision being made here tonight is. Thank you.
Council, any additional questions? Seeing none, I would like to open up this public hearing. This is our Truth in Taxation public hearing for the 2021 property tax levy and general fund budget. Grant, if you could put that slide back up again, if please, with the phone numbers. If you'd like to call in now for public comments, here are the phone numbers. Here's the phone number to call with the conference ID number, and you'll be, an operator will, will handle your call and will, will make sure that you're processed in the order that it's received. And please do, if you have comments, if you have questions, if you have concerns, please do call in. A couple of things that we're going to do here, I'll be, we're going to, we're going to limit testimony to three minutes per person to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to do this. And we don't, we don't go too far and too deep into the weeds here and too late into the evening. What I would like to do also is if people have specific questions, I think in the past, what we've done is tried to answer them on the fly. And that's kind of chewed into the three minutes, chewed into the time allotment for each speaker. So what I would like to do, if people have specific questions, I would like staff to, to take note of those questions, and then we'll answer those questions at the end. We'll, we'll try and collect the questions that people have specifically and be able to answer them. And it'll give a chance, staff a chance, rather than trying to answer them on the fly and without thought or research, give an opportunity to put some details together if there's a, if it's an in-depth question and have an opportunity to do that. We will answer all questions. It will just be at the end of the presentation and the end of the public hearing. So with that, if everybody's okay with that, we have officially opened the public hearing, and I will turn to Ms. Wilson and see if we have anyone on the line wishing to speak on item 8.1 this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our operator this evening is Zen. Zen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Zen, do we have any callers wishing to speak on Agenda Item 8.1?
Okay, if you would like to speak or make a comment, please press star 1 on your telephone keypad. Okay, we have a question or a comment from Ann Holsman. Line is open.
Good evening and welcome. What I would like, also, I forgot to mention this. If I could ask each, each caller, identify yourself. If you could please give us your first and last name, so we have it officially for the record, and then off you go. So good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Bussi. This is Ann Holsman. Mayor, council, and staff, thank you all very much for the hard work that has gone into this proposal. I'm feeling inspired by those videos about the Bond Road Awards recipients. This is a city worth investing in. I'm one of many Bloomington homeowners whose taxes would go down even with the maximum levy increase that council adopted in September. I would gladly pay more to maintain our quality of life, especially our parks and our arts organizations. I heartily endorse the proposed 2.75% levy increase and would even favor more. Again, thank you for all you do to make Bloomington a great place to live and work.
Thank you, Ms. Holsman. Appreciate the phone call. Ms. Wilson?
Zen, could you please give us the next caller?
All right, we have another one from Kurt Mahoney. Line is open.
Good evening and welcome.
See you and councilmembers. Thank you.
If, if you could state your name for us, so we have it officially, please.
Thank you for taking my call. My understanding is that the city of Bloomington-
Excuse me, if I could ask you again, if you could just state your name, could you please state your name, just so we have it for the record, just so we have it clearly for the record?
My name is Kurt Mahoney.
Kurt, thank you very much. Good evening, welcome. Go ahead, please.
My, my question is, can you clarify if the city of Bloomington or someone else is subsidizing keeping the motor vehicle department open? My understanding is that the Hennepin County pays us X amount of dollars on a four, five-year contract to do that. In the years that it gaps, we end up paying as taxpayers to fulfill the debt that it takes to operate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Appreciate it. Staff, if you could, as we finish up here, clarify the subsidy that goes to DMV to, to keep the, to keep the operation running. Ms. Wilson?
Zen, could you please give us our next caller, please?
There are no additional callers at this time. No other questions.
Okay. There's no other callers on the line, or no one else pressing star 1?
Same. No other callers connected at this time. No one pressed star 1.
All right. What I would like to do, if we could, I think we have that one question. If we could, I'd like to leave the public hearing open perhaps and put that number back up, just to be sure that everybody has had an opportunity to call in and to comment on the proposed levy and the proposed budget. 1-866-873-0999. And there's the conference ID number in front of you. And then while, while we have that, maybe either Ms. Wilson or Mr. Verbrugge, if you could, address Mr. Mahoney's question about the subsidization of the motor vehicle office.
Chris, go ahead.
Okay.
Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hennepin County does not provide the city with any financial support to provide the deputy registrar services, the motor vehicle licensing or the driver's licensing. The city has a deputy registrar appointment directly from the state, and the state allows local deputy registrar offices to keep a certain fixed fee for each transaction that we complete. But the state sets those fees. They are paid by the customers of our office and used to partially offset the cost of running the office. There was a time for many years when the fees collected through the motor vehicle office covered fully the cost of providing that service. And in some years, they generated more revenue than it cost to operate the office. However, the state only approves as fee increases every few years. It's been many years, and they have not allowed the fees to keep up with the cost of running the office. Therefore, for the last several years, the city has been transferring money into the motor vehicle fund from some other source. For many years, we transferred in revenue we received from providing passport services, even though passport services are provided elsewhere in the city by different staff. When that became no longer enough to cover the gap, then we started transferring property tax dollars as well or reserves from other funds to support the operation. So to answer the question, we do not receive any money from Hennepin County. We do not have a contract with Hennepin County. Our relationship to providing the services directly from the state, the authorization.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Wilson. Appreciate it. This is the phone number for our public comment period on our public hearings. And I would encourage anybody with input or questions or comments on the proposed 2021 budget or levy to, to call in now. You see the number there in front of you, 1-866-873-0999. Ms. Wilson, could you check again, please?
Certainly. Zen, this is Chris again. Do we have any new callers on the line?
Again, if you would like to ask or make a comment, please press star 1 on your telephone keypad. There is one participant dialing and assisted by an operator at the moment.
Okay, we can hold on for just-
We will absolutely wait. Again, this is the public hearing on our 2021 tax levy and budget. Appreciate your calls, your comments, your questions, your concerns on this. Please call in now if you'd like.
Again, if you would like to speak or make a comment, please press star 1 on your telephone keypad. Sorry, do we have a comment or a question from Elise? Please state your first and last name. Your line is open.
Thank you. My name is Elise Baldarama. I use she, her, hers pronouns. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I have been getting more involved with Bloomington government in the last few years by researching city council, mayor, and school board candidates and voting. This year, with the killing of George Floyd and the longstanding structural and systemic racism in Minnesota, with our horrible racial disparities and racial injustice, I knew I needed to do more. Seeing Faith Jackson join the city has inspired me also. She is a phenomenal leader I knew I could get behind. I've attended listening sessions on the racial equity business plan and listening sessions on the community budget advisory committee. I am grateful for this work and the community engagement that Bloomington is doing. I want to go on record to say that I support the tax levy increase. I also want to say that I encourage the city to use its resources, including its FTEs from all city departments and the strategic priorities funds toward continuing to expand racial equity work and address racism as a public health crisis. My husband and I are fortunate to still be working during the pandemic, during this pandemic, and we can afford to pay more in property taxes to support the public services that we value. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and for your phone call. Ms. Wilson?
Zen, have we gained any other callers in this time?
There are no additional callers at the moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Why don't we put the number up one last time? And maybe put one final call out. We'll leave it open for just another minute or so here. Want everybody to have the opportunity to call in and comment, if they would like, on our property tax levy and budget for 2021. Want to make sure that we aren't leaving anyone out or leaving anyone behind. I appreciate your patience, council. And for those of you watching at home, I appreciate your patience as well. Just want to make sure that we get everybody with an opportunity here. Ms. Wilson, why don't we make a final call here, if we could?
Last call, Zen. Do we have any callers on the line?
There are no callers at the moment.
All right. Thank you. We have another public hearing later in the evening, so please hold on that for Zen, but I'm going to turn it back to the mayor. hold on that for Zen, but I'm going to turn it back to the mayor.
Counsel, we've got nobody on the line looking to comment on our 2021 preliminary levy or our levy and our budget. So if the council is comfortable with it, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Baloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson? Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries six zero. So council, as I said, we have talked about this. We've gone through it in a study meeting and I think a couple of other meetings talked through some of the details here within our levy and our budget. As changes, I'm sure you looked through it, but the changes that we suggested last time and are reflected, I think, in this budget, they're in yellow. I think it's on page 161 of our packet, where a couple of changes within the coed staffing changes from a vacant full-time position to a part-time, to move the special investigations overtime, to be able to fund that from a forfeiture fund instead of if needed, and to remove the new fee for field utilization, the $80,000 for the athletic field utilization fee. And then just a clarification from downsizing our rinks from 14 to nine. I think eight is what we originally had talked about, but the number that we settled on was nine. So council, questions, comments, thoughts on this as we are to this point in the discussion for the budget and to this point in our discussion about not only the levy, but the budget and what it means for services and so on? Looking for thoughts or questions, additional concerns as we move forward on this? Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Carter.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I guess kind of following up on some of the comments earlier, just wondering on that DMV portion, if that was something that we weren't prepared to move forward with tonight, what would that process maybe look like? What would the budget implications be? What would the levy implications be? Would we be able to, I guess, as I've stated before, I prefer not to cut a facility in a program through the budget process, but through more of a focused conversation about that, letting people know that we're specifically going to talk about the DMV and getting input directly to that question. Not saying it's not the right path to go down eventually, but just still not comfortable doing it through the budget process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Councilmember Nelson, you know, I think the downside of not making an up or down decision at this point in time is going to be particularly hard on the employees over there, recognizing that this has been a topic of discussion going back to April. And, you know, we can continue to leave it as an open issue, but it creates a lot of uncertainty for the staff. And I think that would be regrettable. The impact from a budget perspective is that we do have enough working capital to operate it, I think, for a quarter or so. And at that point, if there was a desire to continue to operate it, we'd have to come back to the conversation about how we're going to subsidize it. You know, the concern, which is well discussed amongst the council over the last couple of years, is the fact that the state is not increasing the share of the fee that the local operation can keep. And meanwhile, our cost to operate increase every year. So the situation is unlikely to improve. And despite the best efforts of our supervisor over there who participates in the deputy registrar's organization and the efforts that they have made at the state legislature to try and secure an increase to the fees from the state, you know, there's no assurance that that's going to happen as much as they worked to try and get that to happen at the legislature. So I would be concerned about not making a decision because there is financial uncertainty, but there's even greater uncertainty for our staff.
Councilmember Nelson, anything else? Very good. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't have a question, but I have comments. Would this be a good time to make those?
I believe that's an appropriate thing to be doing right now. Yes, please.
So I guess I just first want to start by commending city staff and the Community Budget Advisory Committee and all of the residents who have been paying attention to this conversation since April, since we started to realize the significant budget impacts that we were going to experience as a city due to the pandemic. And obviously, it's a really challenging situation that we find ourselves in. I've heard from residents that there are many amenities and services that they do not want to see cut. I know all of us have heard from residents, whether that's, you know, police or fire or the arts or parks and rec, specific hockey rinks. You know, it's really, really hard when an amenity or a service that you rely on, that you love, is, you know, being considered to be discontinued or paused. And so I do understand that the people are feeling, you know, really passionate about the conversations that we've been having. But I do think that, you know, the city staff, again, the Cback and then the council, has done a good job really having thorough discussions, balancing what we're hearing from residents, balancing the challenges that we have within the city and across budgets. And I do think we've, I think we've done a good job spreading out the impact across the city. And so I will be, I intend to support the recommendations tonight. I intend to support the levy as it is right now. And specific to motor vehicle, another very challenging conversation. But I do support moving forward with the recommendation that is in front of us tonight by city staff. Not only have we been having this conversation since April, we also did that pretty substantial survey related to Creekside and motor vehicle this spring. And we had, I don't even, I guess I would look to city staff to know how many residents weighed in on this question specifically. But I remember, if I recall correctly, it was a, you know, a pretty split opinion about whether motor vehicles should stay open or if it should be closed. And then if I, I also recall that we wanted to have the conversation about keeping a motor vehicle open or not in the context of the budget and budget decisions. So for those reasons, again, I will be supporting the levy that's being proposed tonight and the recommendations that are being made by staff.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just want to share a few comments as well. And first of all, I also want to thank staff, the Budget Advisory Committee members, and really our entire community. You know, I haven't, I have not been around as long as some other folks on the council, but I can honestly say that of the three budgets that I have been involved in, this has been, I think honestly, the best, most inclusive discussion I've ever seen. There obviously is not 100% agreement, even among probably all of us on the council. But everyone involved has approached it, I think, from sort of the same basic basis of facts, the same understanding of the reality of our situation. And I think the result has been incredibly productive. You've all heard me say that budget decisions are policy decisions and that budgets are the most direct reflection of our values. And I think the work that's been done by staff, by the Cback, and by the Cback and, you know, the conversations that I've had with neighbors reflects that. This is obviously not the budget that I'd put together if it were solely up to me. But I think we're all thankful that it's not solely up to me, me perhaps more than anyone. In particular, I am growing sort of increasingly uneasy about some of the things that we've talked about that just seem to be coming, seem to be becoming cans that are sort of perpetually kicked down the road. I'm always for finding new information and giving staff time to explore creative solutions. But at a certain point, we can't just keep putting decisions off. At a certain point, we're going to have to rip off the Band-Aid. That being said, this is a budget that I can support. I do think it does a decent job of striking a good balance between recognizing that the city of Bloomington does a lot of things that folks depend on, either as a sort of direct need or as an integral piece of the quality of life that we enjoy. While also balancing that with recognizing that property tax increases, and we need to be honest about this, they do hit hardest the folks who are struggling the most. And certainly, there are a lot more people in that situation right now. I do worry a bit that starting from the position of a flat levy for 2022 leans a little bit too heavily to one side of that equation. But I think it's a perfectly fine place for the conversation to start. One of the things that stuck out to me most from the presentation that we just saw was that except for transfers and program and program income and grants, which none of which are particularly reliable, and property taxes, every other source of revenue was down compared to last year. And that means that if we are going to look to a flat levy, we're all going to be making some pretty tough decisions a year from now. And that may well result in things that are cut more deeply. And a lot of those things are going to be, I think, things that many in our community care deeply about. So I would just say that the need for engagement and the need to have honest conversations is going to be even more crucial next year. Like I said, I am incredibly encouraged by how this conversation proceeded this year. But I want to encourage all of us to not sort of rest on our laurels and think about what we can do better moving forward. And some of the thoughts that I have on that, I would like to see us continue some form of the Budget Advisory Committee. You know, we know certainly things will have to look a little bit differently. And we know as well that some folks are not interested necessarily in a longer than one-year gig. But I think it is a worthwhile endeavor. And I think it's really brought forward tremendous dividends for us. And I also think that the sooner the budget discussion begins in concrete terms, the better. So I'd ask that next year, in addition to a preliminary levy, when we get to that point, that we get a more specific preliminary general fund budget as well. From what I've seen, this seems like a fairly common practice in other cities, and I think it should be for us, too. And I guess the last thing I would say is just that I want to urge all of us in the strongest possible terms to think not just about sort of what positions and programs could or would be cut, but how to do things differently. You all know how I feel about relying on that's the way we've always done it. In fact, one of the, I think one of the things that Councilmember Baloga and I agree on most strongly is our contempt for that particular phrase. And I obviously certainly understand that this budget situation came upon us really suddenly. And I actually think staff has really done an admirable job coming to terms with it. But the reality is that next year, we won't have the excuse of suddenness anymore. And I think we need to be bold. I think we need to think creatively. And I think we need to be willing to take risks. I know there is the capacity to do so within our community and within our staff. So I would just urge us to take up the challenge that now is the time to really show what we can do.
Thank you, Councilmember Coulter. Additional questions or comments? I'll be happy to weigh in and echo some of the things that I think I said the other night when we talked about this at our study meeting. What I'm encouraged most about this budget and with this proposed levy that we're looking at is the core values that the staff used to put it together and bringing it forward, that honoring the work of the Budget Advisory Committee, limiting the impact of the proposed property tax increase, and minimizing the impact of, on city services. Not eliminating, because we couldn't do that, but to minimize the impact on city services, and to consider the implications on the impact of the future budget years. And I think that this budget does that, does those four things and does them very well. And as Councilmember Coulter said, is it a perfect budget? No, it's not, because there is no such thing as a perfect budget. And there are things that I probably would have done differently. I think each of us could say that. But I think we understand the reality facing us causes us to make some decisions and some difficult decisions, and will continue to make us consider difficult decisions and make difficult decisions. In particular, as I look at the closure of motor vehicle, that's a particularly difficult one. But at the same time, it's one that I think that is necessary to take place. I understand the financial implications are just part of the story. There are personal implications as well, not only for our employees there, but for the people who have come to rely on the motor vehicle office to, for convenience and for the services that they look to the city of Bloomington to provide as, to them as residents of the city of Bloomington. I do think, however, that we have seen it in other areas where a private vendor can pick this up. I mentioned last time that I've been getting phone calls since April from private vendors looking to do just that here in the city of Bloomington. And I'm confident, I'm very optimistic, that we are going to be able to find a way forward with this. It's, the notion of doing things differently, not doing the same thing that we've always done, I think falls, that falls into this category. This falls into that category, that this is an opportunity to look at something a little bit differently and to be a bit bold, to challenge not only the services that we provide, but to bring in a private entity to provide those services and to challenge our residents to look at things a bit differently as well. I've been talking, as long as I've been on the council, about this notion of a stop-doing list. And a stop-doing list is a matter of what can we do differently or not do and still manage to provide the services that a city would provide and do it very well. And each good organization should have a stop-doing list. And I frankly think that a motor vehicle office in this situation, in this instance, is a good example of that. It should be on our stop-doing list. And so I will be supporting this. I want to commend staff for the outstanding work done. I want to commend our Community Budget Advisory Committee for the long hours that they put into this and the thoughtful discussions that they had. And as others have said, I want to commend our community members who have weighed in on this, who have been involved in this, who have watched this, who have commented. I can't believe the number of comments I've received on this, out walking my dogs on different, when I met Cub, I hear from people, when I was out on election day, heard from a number of folks who had specific ideas and comments about this very process. And to see that level of involvement and that level of commitment and engagement within the community is very encouraging. And I really encourage people to continue it because I think we are to a point here where it's a very good outcome. We had a very strong process and we've got a very good outcome, and let's continue it. Councilmember Baloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think most everything has been said, but not by everybody yet. So I will make my comments brief and to the point. I am being repetitious when I say this is not the budget that I would have assembled. I'm disappointed in the closure of motor vehicle. Three months doesn't seem to be enough time, but in reality, I see that there are, you know, I can count noses. I can see that the majority are foreclosing it and doing it within the recommendation of the city manager, which I frankly disagree with for numbers of reasons, all which have been said before, so I won't repeat myself. Having said that, I will support the budget in its entirety and the levy. The hallmark of a compromise is that everyone goes away not fully satisfied with the result that they were looking for, and that is certainly my case. And I think that's shared by others. But the comments made earlier about the survey on the, uh, comments made earlier about the survey on Creekside and, uh, done in April of last year and May of last year, or this year rather, was overwhelmingly in favor of retaining multiple services. I believe there are about a thousand people who weighed in. And I believe that, well, I don't have the numbers available anymore, that it was eighty percent or so in favor of retaining all services. And I worry, uh, a bit, uh, that, uh, people who have limited mobility see this as a greater takeaway from them than what the majority of us do. But again, I will support both for the reasons I've said already. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Martin, would you like in on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I'll just, uh, add in again my, my thanks, uh, for, for staff not only adapting to kind of all the curveballs that 2020 has been throwing, but then put together a really innovative and effective budget process. Uh, and all the creativity that went into forming the, the C-Bac, I think is pretty incredible. And I wouldn't be surprised if we see our neighbors, uh, starting to adapt similar models into the future. Uh, and I, I just really appreciated Councilmember Coulter's point. I guess I'll kick it out even a year past, uh, what's coming up in, in 2021 and 2022. Though it's kind of tough to imagine right now, at some point we will be recovering. Our, our tax revenues will start picking up, our hospitality industry will start revving up again. Uh, and we'll be in a position where we're able to make some strategic investments into the long-term future of the community. Uh, and I really, really hope, uh, that everybody that we have heard from, that we're bumping into uh, out and about, that is engaged in this process, we've heard from a few tonight, uh, are continuing, uh, once this crisis is passed and once we're able to make some proactive steps in what direction the community is going to be moving forward. Uh, because those voices are just as important when times are good as they are right now when times are tough. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Counsel, with that, I think everybody's had a chance, uh, everybody's had a bite at the apple. I would look for motion on my item eight point one, our 2020 property tax levy and general fund budget. We would have two motions that would be required this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I will.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've moved to adopt the resolution, uh, adopting the final 2021 general fund budget.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Carter to adopt the resolution adopting the final 2021 general fund budget. Additional discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, I will, uh, see to, uh, Councilmember Carter since we sort of tied on the first one.
Fair enough. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you. I would, uh, move to adopt the resolution establishing final tax levies for the city of Bloomington for the year 2021.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Beloga to adopt the resolution establishing final tax levies for the city of Bloomington for the year 2021. Further discussion, counsel? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Well, well done all. Thank you very much for your work. Uh, as I said, thanks to staff. Thanks to our folks in the Budget Advisory Committee. Thanks to the community. Thanks to counsel for your thoughtful input and your discussions on this. I think it, it was, uh, a, a successful process and, uh, so thank you so very much for that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could as well, just
Mr. Verbrugge.
Also, uh, echo the thanks and I, I want to explicitly thank the city council because, uh, when we started this process, I know there was some question about the Budget Advisory Commission and how that was going to play out. And, uh, you know, I appreciate the, the trust and faith that the council showed in, in that process and in the people that we, uh, asked to work with us on that. Uh, and certainly your trust in staff as well. So, uh, I agree, this was a, this was a challenging year like none other, uh, and, uh, I really appreciate the leadership that the city council has shown. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Verbrugge, for your work on this. Thank you very much. With that, counsel, we can move on, on our agenda. We can move on to item six, which is our consent business. I believe Councilmember Carter, you've got the consent agenda this evening?
You, Mayor, thank you. Um, I have not heard of any holds, but I'll do one last call. Okay, hearing none. I would move to adopt the consent agenda, um, six point one through six point one-two.
Uh, with reminder, with a reminder, Councilmember Carter, that we removed, uh, item six-ten from the agenda until the 21st of this month.
Correct. Thank you.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Carter. Did I hear Councilmember Martin with a second?
Second.
So we have a motion on a consent business for items six point one through six point nine and then six point eleven through six point twelve. Any further discussion? Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Next on our agenda is item number seven, our public comment period. It's the period on our agenda each week where we allow the public to comment on items not on tonight's agenda. We start with item seven point one, which is the city manager's response to prior meeting's comments. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. At the November 23rd meeting, Mr. Andrew Tippel asked for an explanation of why a condition assessment of the pool shell at the Family Aquatic Center was not done last year while design concepts were being developed for the community center proposal at Valley View Park. Uh, the city began saving money in the city's facility fund reserve in 2009. A general note, um, sorry, I'm going to try to turn that off. Excuse me. So a, a general note back in the 2008 aquatics business plan, said the city will implement a plan to fund the ongoing upkeep of the facility and enhance the overall appearance of the Bloomington Family Aquatic Center through the CIP. So the additional tax levy to fund the, the pool vessel and, uh, other, uh, maintenance activities began in 2009. Uh, and I provided a, a recap of, um, that since 2009, the council's been aware of this as we've talked about the, the reserve for the, um, pool vessel replacement. Now, in the time that we have had that concentrated effort on the Family Aquatic Center, uh, the maintenance projects, uh, in 2009, uh, we had, uh, several, 2011 and 12, uh, another round of improvements and, uh, maintenance activities. 2015, another round of significant maintenance and then in 16 and, and 2018, 19. Uh, and during that time, uh, those, those varied from just, you know, maybe removing some, uh, some concrete slabs to actually doing, uh, uh, blasting and a painting of the pool vessel itself. So variation of the amount of work. Now, prior to my arrival, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the city, that's back in 2015, the, the city had been planning for a number of years, replacement of the pool vessel. Pool, uh, was actually built back in about 1971. So the vessel itself is, uh, just about 50 years old right now. Now, the project cost, uh, of $12 million that's in the CIP was a staff estimate when it was added. And the replacement date in the CIP was also a placeholder just based on staff's estimate of the life cycle of a facility like, um, the Family Aquatic Center and especially, uh, a pool like that. So the maintenance cycle for the pool vessel is similar to what we do for roads. On the list of maintenance projects, there are two different cycles of blasting and painting the pool in the last 11 years. Uh, just as we do seal coats to extend the life of roads before they need be rehabilitated or reconstructed. So council made the decision in early 2019 to develop a community center design concept at Valley View Park that would possibly include an indoor-outdoor water feature. Since that indoor-outdoor pool idea was also being discussed as part of the design concept at Creekside, uh, some council members expressed concern that the idea of redundant pool amenities wasn't financially responsible and that the most financially responsible approach may be to combine the compete, the community center and, and the, uh, Family Aquatic Center at Valley View Park. So that was the direction that was given to staff. Uh, it wasn't suggested at the time that verifying the condition of the pool was a factor because the understanding was that a likely replacement was anticipated within 10 years based on conversations that we had had been, we'd had with council over a couple of years related to the CIP. So the planning and the preliminary design work for potential community center didn't reach the point of more detailed design work before the council decided to halt work on the project. Uh, if a community center project had proceeded into more detailed design phases, a more detailed design level review would likely have been made of the pool if it was part of the project at the time. Uh, it was not part of a, if it was not part of the community center project, a more detailed assessment of the pool would have been accomplished as the potential project came nearer to implementation, uh, much as was done with last year's, with this year's assessment. So when the park and rec director made assertions about the condition of the pool, she was repeating information that had been provided to her by me and others on our staff. So I, I think it's important to keep in mind that, uh, Ms. Catry, the park and rec director had been with the city for a very brief period of time at that point, about seven or eight months, and had been deeply immersed in the community center process and was relying on other staff to provide that historical information. So there just simply wasn't consideration of a condition assessment, um, during those months because the focus was, uh, on putting together the design concept for the community center idea. Uh, now, subsequent to that process ending, uh, last year and the work starting on the park system master plan, staff did identify, uh, verifying the condition of the pool as an important step in the long-term financial planning, uh, and that's why we did the condition assessment this year. We didn't want to assume any of the information in the past and, uh, council's been clear with us in discussing, um, CIP and facility projects that information that you're basing decisions on needed to be recent and relevant. So that's, that's the, uh, longish answer, uh, to why we didn't do a condition assessment last year. And, uh, happy to answer any questions, uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, that you might have in that regard. Uh, but hopefully that satisfies the question of the resident who, who asked it two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Counsel, any questions on that? Seeing none, we will move on to item seven point two, which is our public comment period. It is a 20-minute period at each of our council meetings where, again, we allow the public to comment on items not on tonight's agenda. And if you've tuned in before, I think you know and understand the, uh, the way we do this. It's a 20-minute period. We limit each, uh, commenter to five minutes. And that's not in an effort to, to limit the speech, it's to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. It's also, uh, not our, our, um, not our focus to, to respond to specific questions as they are made. What we typically like to do is wait until the next meeting when the city manager can respond in a little bit more in-depth with a little more detailed answer rather than us or them trying to, members of the staff trying to answer off the cuff or to come up with details and information. So there won't be back and forth, there won't be engagement unless it's some basic kind of things about, uh, some very knowledge, very, uh, basic information, you know, when is New Year's Day, that kind of thing. We'll be able to answer that, but anything more in-depth than that, we wouldn't be able to do. So, um, the number is in front of you. Well, it will be in front of you in just a moment for, uh, the, uh, your ability to call in. 1-866-873-0999 to call in for public comment period. Ms. Wilson, if you could please ask if we have everyone, anyone on the line to, uh, speak to our public comment period this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Zen, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Zen, do we have anyone on the line wishing to speak under public comment, which is agenda item seven point two?
Okay, if you would like to ask or speak, make a comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. And no public comment at this time. You may continue.
We have no one calling in at this time. Uh, we will leave the public comment period open for 20 minutes and we'll make a final call a little bit after nine o'clock to see if anyone has joined the call to speak this evening. With that, we'll move on to our second official public hearing of the evening is item eight point two, which is a public hearing on, uh, new on-sale wine and on-sale 3.2 malt liquor license application for Aroma Indian Cuisine. And I believe Mr. Doug Junker, our deputy clerk, is going to bring us through this. Good evening, Mr. Junker, and welcome. Mr. Junker, I believe you're muted still.
How's that?
There, we can hear you. Thank you.
There we go. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Mr. Council, or Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight we have Sci Foods doing business as the Roma, uh, Foods. I believe they got going earlier this summer in the middle of all this and, uh, are looking to add some beer and wine to their menu. We're looking for your approval. You may also notice that the beer is only good for, till the end of this month. Um, I will be back on the 21st with this license and all the other beer licenses for the 2021 renewal cycle.
Very good. And you said they, they opened up earlier this year?
Yeah, they, they got going in the middle of all this, this summer, uh, started with the patio and really slow. And then, uh, came asking this fall of how to ask beer and add beer and wine to their menu and here we are tonight. So making a run of it.
Good for them. Good to know. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Junker? If not, this is a public hearing and I'd like to open this public hearing on item eight point two, a new on-sale wine and on-sale 3.2 malt liquor license application for Aroma Indian Cuisine at 517 West 98th Street.
Zen?
Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Zen, do we have any callers for agenda item eight point two?
There's no callers at this time.
Thank you.
Counsel, seeing no one coming forward to comment on item eight point two in this public hearing, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So will Beloga.
Second, Martin.
We got a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Martin to close item eight point two. The public hearing on eight point two. Hearing no further comments, no further questions. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman? I mean, sorry, he's not here. Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six zero to close the public hearing on item eight point two. Counsel, action on this item or any questions or any clarification you need from Mr. Junker? No questions? I would look for action.
Mr. Mayor, seeing no one coming forward, I move to approve an on-sale wine license and an on-sale 3.2% malt liquor license for Salai Foods LLC doing businesses Ella Aroma Indian Cuisine.
Second.
And a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Mo- uh, Martin to approve an on-sale wine license and an on-sale 3.2 malt liquor license for Sci Foods doing businesses Ella Aroma Indian Cuisine. Counsel, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Moving on to our organizational business, item nine on our calendar, on our agenda. And item nine point one, which is a discussion and possible approval of the 2021 city council meeting calendar. Mr. Verbrugge.
Well, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I appreciate the comments earlier about not always doing things the way we've done them because that's the way we do things. Uh, so what I've tried to, uh, provide for the council is a, a variation on our calendar and frankly, our just meeting structures going forward. For, um, For several reasons, I've laid out an option where we would move away from the regular meeting and study meeting format and go to a consistent, regular meeting format where we have business being conducted every, every Monday night when a council meeting is scheduled. That will have the benefit of moving work through the workflow through the process a little bit more timely, in a more timely fashion. That will especially, I think, benefit the planning department in how they bring items to the agenda. And it also helps the council for the public hearing docket. Often when we have only two meetings in a month, the public hearing docket can get pretty full with public hearings coming from planning commission work and those items often take a fair amount of time to work through, which I think is contributing to some of the longer meetings that we've been having. So the idea is that making more meetings available to conduct regular business and have those public hearings will smooth those out. The second aspect is to look at the start time of six o'clock rather than seven o'clock. Six o'clock is the start time for our study meetings. So just going to that for our regular meetings. And then the third aspect is adjusting the agenda a little bit if we were to do that so that public comment is the very first thing on the agenda after adoption of the agenda itself. The purpose of doing that is to have a predictable time for people who want to engage with the city council and address the council to know when that is going to happen during the meeting. People have understandably very busy schedules and knowing that public comment is going to occur at roughly the same time every evening and then they can have their, their say and be on their way, I think is a, is a better way to value the input from residents and give folks a, a clear understanding of, of when that opportunity presents itself. So just putting that forward for your discussion, council members, and happy to answer any additional questions. And you have two different options in the packet, so whichever option you decide, if you would just clarify in the motion either that it is the current format or the new format, there isn't much difference in the meeting dates. There might be one or two differences, but for the most part, I've tried to stay away from having every Monday scheduled. So in, especially in months where we have five Mondays, not using all of them up, but recognizing that, I, I think that most of you plan Mondays to be council nights anyway. So at least putting it on the calendar that we have it as an option. As one of the council members said to me, it is better to have the meeting on the calendar and cancel it than to have to add a meeting onto the calendar because obviously you're planning your calendars in advance as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll stop and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Councilmember Beloga, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Jamie, you know, there's pros and cons to both of these. One of it is, is a six o'clock start is when a lot of people are still having dinner who would like to watch council meetings. And of course, participants, numbers of the council members are employed and I think that can cause some difficulty in making schedule, particularly when we're back in chambers. Today it's easier because we're all working from home. So those are part of the cons. One of the questions I have is, is we adopted different rules of procedure because of reordering of the agenda and it would seem to me that we'd need to do that again and do we need to do that again prior to executing on option two, I guess I'll call it.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Beloga and council members. Yes, we would have to amend the rules of procedure and we could bring those back on the 21st if the council chooses to do so. And I think we can probably make those changes. I shouldn't speak for our council secretary who may have to do a little work to reorder the agenda, but if it, if it can't be done in time for January, we can certainly do it in not too distant future after that. So we do need to make an amendment to the rules of procedure, yes.
Okay, thank you. Then there's a sort of an anomaly for a couple of meetings in option two for budget study sessions and I presume that those are to be unique just for budget and that's why they're called out separately and still called as study meetings rather than regular council meetings. Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Beloga.
Those are all the comments and questions I have. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I want to pick up actually on a point that, that Councilmember Beloga brought up and, and Jamie, it's something I, I asked you about when we discussed this previously is, you know, knowing that if meetings are starting at six o'clock and public comment is the first thing after adoption of the agenda, that, that cuts into dinnertime and also could potentially cut into time for, you know, folks who are, are still getting off work. And, you know, I know, of course, that, that nothing's going to be perfect, right? Like some folks work the night shift and can't comment at all and, and that's the way that is. I'm wondering if you know of other cities with a sort of similar time schedule, both in terms of starting meetings at six o'clock and having public comment earlier in the evening and, and if that's a, an issue that, that they have or if that's a concern that, that's been raised there, I'm curious if you know anything about that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Councilmember Coulter, it's a good question. I am familiar, because I haven't, I haven't researched your question before, so this is just off the top of my head. The city of Eagan has public comment prior to the beginning of their council meeting. So their council meeting starts at seven. They start the public comment, my understanding is in advance of that. I believe it's at 6:30. So the, you know, the, the comments about, you know, the conflict with the time of day and dinner, I think are, are good observations. I think it is just as likely that, you know, if somebody is a parent and has small kids, if public comment isn't scheduled somewhere from, you know, 7:20 to 8:40, whenever it comes up, it is just as hard to, you know, try and schedule around issues going on at home. I, I would also suggest, Mayor and council, that even though there is going to be a time in the future, and hopefully it's soon, where we can reconvene in the council chambers and have in-person meetings, that this new mode of virtual engagement and participation in our council meetings provides us a lot of opportunity to continue doing some of this so that a person doesn't necessarily have to come to Civic Plaza. If we're doing in-person meetings, that we can still continue some aspect of online participation in the meetings. And I think that would be a way to try and surmount that hurdle of, you know, folks maybe being inconvenienced by the time of day. It's a lot easier to do it from home than it is to pack up and have to race down to City Hall. There was one other, did I answer all your questions? I thought there was one other point I was going to make there.
I, I guess as far as I'm concerned, I would say that you did. I, I, I don't know that it's necessarily a huge concern. I think it's something we'll want to, to keep an eye on and certainly as, as the parent of a young child, I'm, I'm well aware of, of lack of availability between dinnertime and about eight o'clock. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and I did recall the other point, thank you, was that this is not the only opportunity for people to submit comments to the council. They can always use email, you know, the, the city council email address on our website. They can also leave telephone voicemails with the council secretary and those are also shared as public comment with the council in advance of the meetings as well. And that'll continue to be the case.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I guess a comment and a question here. I, I do like the idea of including what would typically be considered a study item in the casings of a, a regular meeting. I know, I'm sure we've all had experiences where an item comes before council six months, a year, a year and a half, that it's coming to study sessions and we're having good discussions and we're really digging into things, but then it comes up at a public meeting and folks can feel surprised because they haven't been as involved with it over the time. So I, I think our, our move to having on-camera study sessions helps with that, but this is kind of a step further, I guess. My question, if we were to move out public comment, and maybe we addressed this in one of our previous rounds of changes, would folks be able to comment to items that are included on our consent agenda? I, I know that's come up in the past if, if somebody has an idea about something, but they can't communicate that to get it pulled in time for further conversation. Is that envisioned as being a part of that?
Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Martin, I think that's an excellent point and by, by having public comment occur consistently before the consent agenda gives us that opportunity. So, you know, it may not be that there, that's a public hearing or a resolution or an ordinance, but to identify that, you know, I have a concern about what is on the, the consent agenda. Because we try to, when people contact us in advance of the meeting, we're able to tell them how it works and then we can pull an item from consent if we know we have somebody who is concerned by that, but not everybody understands the process and we don't always catch everybody when they're concerned. I would say that's definitely an opportunity, Councilmember Martin, to make it a more approachable and accessible experience for a resident who has concerns. And the other, the other observation you made was about the study items as part of the regular agenda. And I do want to, I do want to share with the council that I had some reluctance making the recommendation because many of our study sessions start with bringing, with bringing in an outside consultant or a number of other staff people who don't normally attend council meetings and we tend to have them on earlier in, in the meeting agenda, especially outside parties. So, you know, there is the potential that it would be a little bit more inconvenient for people who are going to be presenting to the council by being at a later hour. And where I came down on that, frankly, council members, is that having residents accessing the meeting at the very beginning of the meeting, I think is, is the priority because that, you know, ultimately that's who the council is serving. And if we're inconveniencing a consultant or two along the way by a later hour, I, I think the focus on residents is a, is a better choice.
Councilmember Beloga, additional comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An additional thought is, is that we're starting early and there's always the opportunity of filling the time available. So I would suggest that we do an 11 o'clock hard stop as we've talked about before on the agenda from whenceforth if we do adopt a six o'clock. So thanks for the opportunity.
Couldn't agree more, Councilmember Beloga. Absolutely. Just my, my perspective on this and in thinking about this and talking with Mr. Verbrugge about this on a couple of different occasions, we, we've talked about as a council and I, and I've worried about as I've, as I've taken control, handled the meetings, trying to run the meetings, both agenda management and then meeting management. And I think it, it always concerns me when we get too late and we have gotten too late on too many occasions over the, over the fall and summer. It makes me concerned about the residents who are calling in and trying to participate or just trying to watch and, and understand what's going on. I worry about the staff because they have to get right back out at first thing in the morning. I worry about the council members for that matter. I've said many times that I have a long history of making bad decisions after midnight and it's very well documented, believe me. And so I, 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 I think this gives us an opportunity to do a little bit better job of agenda management so we can spread out the public hearings, we can spread out the study items, that we don't have to jam them all into one meeting and then have a seven-hour meeting. And it gives us a chance to do meeting management, that we can control the meetings a little bit more. I agree fully with Councilmember Beloga's idea of an 11 o'clock hard stop unless we are absolutely in the throes of something that cannot wait. But I, I think this is, this is a good way to, to approach it. I think the six o'clock start time, again, not perfect. You're going to get some people who are inconvenienced. It's going to be bad for some folks, but then again, when we're on the other end at midnight, it, it becomes an issue for our folks on, on the other end in some ways as well. And then the final thing that I want to say is that I, I like this as a, as a possibility, but if we get to Memorial Day and we realize that this isn't the way to do it, for whatever reason, whether it's the six o'clock start time or it, it just isn't, is, it's not the right thing to do, we can make the change back if we need to. I mean, we do have flexibility with this. This isn't carved in granite and we can't change ever again, but I do think it's worth at least giving a shot and seeing if it can improve some of our, our process and our flow and, and the ability for people to participate. Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I appreciate that clarification that this would be, you know, a flexible process and that if we get halfway through next year and it's just not working well for our residents or for the council members, that we could revisit that decision. So a quick question that I have for, for you, city manager, if we make this decision tonight, what would be, how would we communicate to residents that starting in January, our meetings would be changing to six o'clock? I know a lot of people tune in and so just want to make sure we give advanced notice, advanced communication as much as possible to our, our residents.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Councilmember Carter, as council is aware, we have many different platforms for communicating. Our challenge is always to try to ensure that people are seeing what we're putting out there. You know, we have our social media platforms through the Sun Current, we can, we would certainly use that, our, our e-subscribe system where we send out blast notifications. We would, we would do what we call the all play for everything that we have to make sure that it's well communicated.
Thank you.
And I would just chime in, Councilmember Carter. Councilmembers have their own social media platforms as well, I think, to spread the news on if we would do something like this. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just have one thing to add. I'd agree with most of the sentiment shared and the benefits to residents and the community of, of this change. I, I also think it'll benefit our business community. We do a lot of work with entitlements and helping people through and sometimes it's hard to say when that next meeting would be. And I know for those to get an approval on a development or something like that, when there are maybe questions and concerns that they had to follow up on, that time is money to them and being able to get back to it within a week or, or two, instead of waiting maybe three or, or a month is really important for our businesses in the community. So thank you to our city manager for this proposal. I, it's very much appreciated.
And, and as I said, this being what it is, it, it wouldn't be carved in granite. We could have flexibility if need be. We could make tweaks if we needed to. If, you know, we get to the point and we realize six thirty is a better start time than six, I mean, we, we, we have flexibility in this and we can, we can make adjustments if we need to, to, to better serve what we're trying to accomplish here. Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Loman is not here and he's employed and I believe he has some difficulty with time from time to time. Has he been polled or is there a way to ensure that this is not a problem for him on a weekly basis?
Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Beloga, I did talk to Councilmember Loman. I would say that his, his preference would not to have, would be to not have a six o'clock start on a weekly basis. He, he did appreciate the efforts that we've all talked about in terms of trying to improve some access for residents and more predictability. You know, if that, I want to go with the will of the council. You know, if that, I wanna go with the will of the council here and, and not make it, uh, you know, extraordinarily difficult for councilmember Loman, um, you know, we could also try six thirty as a little bit of a hedge. Uh, just to make it that much easier if we can. Um, but yes, councilmember Beloga, he did express a concern about that start time.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Manager.
So thoughts on that, council? I, I think the six o'clock straight up start time, I think, is, is easier to communicate. It's a bit more, you know, uh, solid and, and, and doable. But at the same time, I do acknowledge, I know that councilmember Loman does sometimes have trouble with the six o'clock starts when we have them. So I don't know if six thirty would be better. Um, councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess, you know, I, I am obviously sympathetic to, to councilmember Loman's predicament. Um, I, I agree that, that a six P M. Start time is just generally easier to communicate, easier for folks to understand. I'm also, you know, I, I, of course, I, I like and respect councilmember Loman on a, on a personal level. I'm a little wary of basing decisions like this on one individual council member's schedule at the time. Um, I, I just, I think that, that's not, uh, it's not a good way to make policy. It's, it's not, I think, a good way to, to do business, for lack of a better phrase. When we, you know, employment situations change and, and things like that, um, I, I'm just, you know, to, to what the city manager mentioned, we, we serve the community. Um, so I'm a little wary of, of making decisions like that based on one council member's employment schedule.
So, council? What are we thinking? One way or another, we've got to approve our 2021 council meeting calendar. And, um, I'd guess I'd look for action if we wanna go with option A, which I think we've decided is the maintain the status quo or option B, where we make the changes proposed by Mr. Verbrugge. Anyone?
Well, since councilmember Loma's not here to do it, I will just go ahead and put forward a motion and, uh, see where, where folks come down if we're comfortable taking that approach.
Councilmember Coulter?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the new format, uh, twenty one, twenty twenty one, excuse me, city council meeting calendar. And just to clarify, that would be the meeting start time of six o'clock P M.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Martin.
We have a motion by councilmember Carter, or Coulter, excuse me, and a second by councilmember Martin to approve the, the new format for our 2021 city council meeting calendar. Any further discussion? Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, just a, a comment rather than a, uh, a question and that is, is, uh, I think we've expressed an interest of being flexible and seeing what works. And, uh, with that spirit, uh, I will, uh, uh, go along with the, uh, six o'clock start time and option B. So I will support that option.
Thank you for the input, councilmember Beloga. Anyone else with comments? If not, we've got a motion and a second. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Hi.
Carter? I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you. Coulter?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Mayor Bussie?
Hi. Motion carries six zero. So we've got a new format for our 2021 council meetings. Uh, I would encourage, uh, as I mentioned earlier, for councilmembers to use their social media platforms to get the word out. I'd make sure we follow the lead of the city communication staff because they'll have the correct wording and, and the, uh, the messaging that we wanna get out, but make sure that we do, uh, pair with them and, and make sure we get that information out. So everybody, uh, knows about this and isn't caught off guard as we get to our first meeting in 2021. So it is now nine fifteen and our, we're well past our twenty minutes for our, uh, public comment period. Ms. Wilson, let's take one more check and see if we have anyone on the public comment period. And if we do not, we can close that and then we can release our, our operator as well.
Thank you. Zen, this is Chris. Do we have any callers on the line?
We don't have callers at this time.
All right. Thank you for your assistance tonight. That's our final opportunity for public comments. So you can go ahead and, uh, disconnect. We appreciate your assistance.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Have a good day.
Thank you, Zen. Thanks. Onto item nine point two in our organizational business, and this kind of actually melds into some of the things that we were talking about and trying to make sure we get to some study items in addition to our business items on our city council meetings. Nine point two is an update on the thirty five W Minnesota River Bridge Project. Amy Maron, our civil engineer is here to update us. Ms. Maron, that's a nice looking bridge.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. So I've been giving some updates, um, on different regional projects. And tonight I'll give a update on our thirty five W Minnesota River Bridge Project. Um, this will be a pretty quick project update and then we'll discuss an opportunity for some city signage on the new bridge monuments. So we are actually pretty excitingly close to completion of the Mendat River Bridge Project. Um, you'll recall that we, they started this project in twenty eighteen, but planning's been underway since twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. The goals of this project were to reconstruct the aging river bridge structure, raise part of the roadway out of the floodplain, and most excitingly for Bloomington, was to construct the new bike pad connections over the Minnesota River and to replace the bridge over a hundred sixth street. Um, we're excited about the safety benefits of both of these projects as well as the improved bike and pedestrian connections in the area. So as far as bridge construction status, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, it is a pretty good looking bridge out there. Um, the only additional work that they, or the, the main additional work left on the bridge is the final wear course of the pavement that will happen, that's planned to be happened in the spring of twenty twenty one. This will help smooth out the surface and, um, finish up the, the, the course. Right now, you may, drivers may notice a few spots that are a little bit noisy as you drive over them. That will all be finished in twenty twenty one, spring of twenty twenty one. So, um, back on November seventeenth, um, we, with Mendat and Burnsville hosted a multimodal user meeting. It was very well attended. We had about forty people signed in and lots of good questions. Some of the main things covered is that the trail is now open on both sides of the bridge. Um, maintenance was a big question, winter maintenance specifically. Snow removal will fall to local agencies for small events and to Mendat for the larger snow events, which we would refer to as the load and haul operations where they actually have to blow the snow over that barrier onto the main line and then load that and haul it off the bridge. We're currently working on our maintenance agreements with both Mendat and City of Burnsville. Um, so now we'll move on to our next, which we'll call an opportunity. So, um, you will notice that when the bridge was constructed over the river, um, Mendat added bridge monument signs. These are about thirty feet tall. Um, there's one on each side of the bridge and they were added as, as an aesthetic feature. They're shown approximately at where the red dots are located on that graphic. And you can see a photo, I believe it's from an actual travel lane. So, um, it's not the best image, but it is something that we had available. But that's essentially what the bridge monuments look like right now. So back when the bridge planning was underway in twenty seventeen, this Bloomington City Council had expressed an interest in adding some city marker signage on these monuments. So I'm bringing this to the council tonight to give some information about what the signage or the, the city marker signage could look like, um, what the potential estimated cost would be if the city were to, were, was interested in moving forward with that signage. And obviously it makes sense that since there is one of these monuments on the Bloomington side and one on the Burnsville side, to talk a little bit about the coordination and the discussions that we've had to date with Burnsville. And then the opportunity to try to add this in with the twenty twenty one bridge project as it's wrapped up. So this first graphic shows a few of the different options that were put together, um, just to get discussions started. From Bloomington, as we were starting to look at these, um, we had representatives, um, we had Ashley Klemmer from Communications, Alejandra Palenka from Creative Placemaking, and Julie Long and myself from Engineering, um, as well as representatives from Burnsville. And what we were trying to look at is, um, what would we want the logo to look like? And what, what, um, kind of visually, visually just seeing it on there to the, to scale, what it would actually look like. We wanna make sure that, um, we're conforming with our City of Bloomington logo guidance. Seeing where the different placement, placement levels of the signs and how those would look. Again, looking for logo conformance. Um, there was some interest in that, the vertical wording, but that really does not, uh, comply with, with what the, um, the guidance is for the use of our developed logo. And then we also discussed, um, colors of the materials that would be used. Um, lastly, there was a significant amount of discussion about which side of the bridge would have which logo. So we'll get into those a little bit further. These are, these are kind of the options that we landed on as being the preferred look at this point. Um, and so you'll see that there, there are different colors. Um, or there's two colors to each, on each side. This is, uh, what they would look like on the larger face of the monument. So that's not the face that is directly facing the northbound or the southbound traffic. It's what you would see, um, glancing over to your left as you're entering the city. Um, so we did, as these options were prepared, we did request some cost estimates be prepared as well. There is a lot of assumptions that went into the, the cost estimates, but we did, there was a quote from a sign fabricator and then, um, some additional estimates on installation, um, right permits, traffic control. A thousand dollars, but that would include the signage on both sides of the bridge. So there would be, so if we were to move forward, we would split the costs and, or share the costs with Burnsville.
Amy, if I could interrupt for just a second, you broke up there right in the middle of those comments about the cost. If you could repeat that, just so we're clear on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, my apologies. Thank you for asking me to restate that. So the S, the cost estimates currently are estimated to be about twenty five thousand dollars. And since there would be equal amount of signage on each side of the river, we would anticipate splitting that fifty fifty between Bloomington and Burnsville. That is all with the caveat that we're looking to the council to see if there is interest in pursuing this. All right. So I'm gonna move on to, um, this, hopefully we'll cover a little bit of the discussion about where to place the signage and what it was landed on. So again, the, the red letters, the A, B, C, D on each side of the bridge are used to, um, label the different faces of the monuments. And there was, we landed on a consensus that, uh, the Bloomington signage should be located on the Bloomington side of the river. And so it would be oriented to face drivers as they are entering the city. So on the B side of the face and the C side of the face. So drivers keep, keeping looking at the, the Bloomington side of the river. Drivers that would be heading south out of the city on our A side of the monument, they would see a graphic that just says Minnesota River. And then the D side would be left blank. And then that is just reversed and flipped on the, the Burnsville side. Here is a photo visualization of what that, uh, would look like for a driver. This would be, uh, a driver headed northbound into Bloomington that has just crossed the river. So if they're looking to the left, they would see on the large face would be the larger graphic. And as they were headed towards the bridge up out of the river valley, they would see that smaller graphic with a light shining down on it. So, um, one other thing to point out is that when Mendat did originally construct these monuments, uh, there, they knew that there was gonna be an opportunity for the cities to come and put signage on these if they, if they desired. Um, not knowing exactly what that was gonna look like, they actually did construct these monuments already with the light on the, the opposite side of where we would want to put our city signage. So the cost estimate does include the addition of this new light, um, that's located up at the top. These are just examples of the Burnsville side signage, as well as just a quick graphic of what the Minnesota River sign or logo itself could be. So we've, we feel that this is a great opportunity for the city to add some city marker signage on this thirty five W entry location. The reason that we investigated this is based on previous discussions that we've heard from the council regarding an interest in this. So if the council is interested in moving forward with this option, um, we think this would be the time to do it. Um, it's, uh, probably, probably the best, um, lowest cost opportunity, the most cost effective time to do it, um, where our costs would be less than fifty, anticipated to be less than fifteen thousand dollars. Um, we would hope to be able to construct this, um, directly into the Mendat project. And if not, we could at least do it simultaneously as they're finalizing the Mendat project. Um, and we believe that users will see this as part of the bridge project. So, um, I'll open it up to questions, but I'm not asking for the council to order a project at this time. Um, if the council, just looking for discussion, and if the council concurs on moving forward um, with adding this type of signage on the, the monuments, then we would come back to order a feasibility study and order the project.
Thank you much. See, councilmember Coulter and then councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, any couple of quick questions here? I guess to, to start off with, you know, as I'm, as I'm thinking about this and we're thinking, of course, about folks who are heading, they would be heading north into the city of Bloomington because the idea is that the signage, sorry about that. Um, the idea is that the signage is on the city of Bloomington's side. I mean, I would, I would think both in terms of just, you know, when I think about how I drive, you know, I tend to face forward. I don't tend to look to the left very often. And I would also think in terms of public safety, we would want folks to sort of keep their eyes on the road. Um, so I'm wondering if there was any discussion about, it, it looks at, it looks to me like on all these options that the larger logo would be the one that would be on my left and the smaller one would be the one straight ahead. I'm wondering, was there any discussion about swapping those, about having the larger logo being the one that I see straight ahead and the smaller one as I look to the left?
Ms. Maron?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Coulter, um, hindsight is always twenty twenty and ideally if this monument would have been rotated ninety degrees, um, it would have been a lot easier for us to prominently display our, our city, um, city marker signage. Unfortunately, that front face is a lot narrower than the, the side face. And so that is, it's really the largest that we could get, um, that logo to be on that face that is facing traffic.
Okay, that, that makes sense. If there's a logical reason for it, that's fine. Um, I guess the only other question I have is, what if our logo changes? Like what if, what, what happens if we at some point or, or some future city council decides that's not the logo we want for the city of Bloomington anymore?
Councilmember Coulter, that is, that is also a great question. Um, these would not be permanently, um, ground in or anything onto this monument. They are an external feature, so they could be removed in the future. That would probably cost just a little bit more if you were replacing something because you'd have the, the removal cost plus the new installation, but it is changeable.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the two questions I had, uh, councilmember Coulter asked, and I have no other comments.
Thank you, councilmember Beloga. And actually, those are the two questions that I had as well. So well done, councilmember. So well done, Councilmember Coulter. You, you summarized it for every.
Great minds, Mr. Mayor.
Council, any additional questions?
If I could sneak in a quick one, Mayor.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll see if I came up with a mythical third question here. I'm wondering, it kind of gets to the, the size question. You had mentioned not wanting to go with the vertical on the word Bloomington there. And again, with kind of how compressed it is, was that just due to kind of our marketing brand standards, or was there a logistical reason that couldn't move forward?
Ms. Marone?
Yeah, Councilmember Martin, it really was due to our, our logo guidance. So we did have somebody, a representative from Communications, who was helping make sure that we're conforming with the standards of our logo. There was some basic inquiries to see if there were any exceptions that have made, been made for that, and there haven't been in the past. So it's not a currently approved use to go with the vertical. Can certainly investigate that further if that was the desire of, of all the council. Burnsville generally supported that. I, I, you know, I shouldn't speak for Burnsville. I know we had a lot of discussion, and I'm not sure exactly if they were allowed to use the vertical lettering either.
Yeah, if it could be worked out, even just for readability, especially at night, I'd be curious if that's something we could do.
Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I generally support this, but I don't think we should be locked into standards for logos where there's an obvious reason to give an exception. And I think in this instance, to me at least, it's quite obvious that we get more visibility of a logo when it's presented in a different fashion. And thank us again.
Additional questions? I, I, I'm sensing that the consensus here is that this is a good idea, especially at, you know, a $12,000 price point with part of the project, and we might as well get it done while we can, because we have talked about this in the past. But I do think, I'm also hearing that there's the desire to try and make it a little more bang for our buck there, because I, I agree that it would make life a lot easier if it was just rotated 90 degrees, but I'm assuming that's out of the question right now. And if that's the case, then how can we make sure that we get the biggest bang for the buck and make sure that as people cross the bridge into the city of Bloomington, they know, they know they're in Bloomington? And maybe it's a matter of going back to our communication staff, our graphic design staff, and see if they could come up with new alternatives or new ideas. But just at least something that would give us a little bit more wow factor than that rather small Bloomington graphic. And, and I agree with Councilmember Coulter, as I said, his question about what do we do if and when we change that logo? How do we deal with it then? So I, if I can get the, the nodding approval of the, the council that we think this is a good idea, but let's, let's investigate other standards or other possibilities to try and get a little more bang for our buck here and really make it a, put that monument to use and let it show off Bloomington a little bit more. Is that enough direction, Ms. Marone? Can you go back and do that?
That is, Mr. Mayor. So we will continue to work with coordination with Burnsville to make sure that they are officially in the same position to try to move this forward. And we'll do some further investigation on the flexibility of doing vertical on that front, vertical lettering on that front face to see if there's any exceptions and, and if we would have that option to do that. And we'll come back with a feasibility study that has two options.
So is, is it a matter of if Burnsville can't do vertical, then do you want to keep it consistent on either side of the bridge? Is that what I'm understanding?
Um, you know, we've been working with Burnsville, and they've, the similar to Bloomington city staff had given the unofficial, yep, we really want to find more information, and we think that this is something that our council is interested in. Need to ask if Burnsville has had the same opportunity to get more of a formal approval from their council as well. But to answer your other question, I, I do think that we could be a little bit different on our signage, but there has been a general support for trying to keep it a, a little bit of a uniform look.
Tell them we want blinking neon, and ideally some animation in there, and see how they respond to that, because, and then, then work your way back to the, to the vertical. And, and it usually works that way, I think. I like that idea.
All right, I'll, I'll work on my sales pitch.
Very good. Council, any other questions or thoughts on this one? If not, Ms. Marone is gonna stick around for item 9.3 as well, which is another update on the I-94, 494 Airport to Highway 169 project and, that we've got going on right now. And I think we're still in the study and how we're gonna do this and what we're gonna pay for questions. So, Ms. Marone?
Yes, we are still all in the study and all in the how are we gonna pay for this phase? So I last updated the council in, back in June, and since, on the study, and since then there have been some changes. At that time, we thought we were looking at what a proposed first build project would be. However, when that was brought onto the Policy Advisory Commission, or Committee for the study, there was a lot of discussion about how much equity analysis had gone into development of that first build option, and wanting to have that go back to the Technical Advisory Committee and take a look and see if there was a way to put together implementation strategy for all of the projects on the corridor and to add an equity analysis into that, into that discussion. So since that last update, there's been work on equity analysis. There has been continued evaluation of interchange design options for access reconfiguration. There's been some additional input from a local study called, led by the CNU about the Portland Avenue Interchange. And then there's also been much discussion about pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. So tonight, we're gonna do a quick update on what's happened since then related to those issues that I identified. So just gonna do a quick little overview on, on the equity. So one of the first steps that the, that the TAC did, when, the Technical Advisory Committee did, when brought back with the, the request to apply more of an equity analysis was to divide all of the, or separate all, all of the individual projects, project components that are being looked at on this corridor. And you'll see from this graphic that there is about nine different elements to the 494 Vision project itself. And so then, a more detailed look, the TAC then went in on each of the projects and tried to evaluate the impacts, the benefit and the benefits on these different projects. So this is an example of the user benefit impact map for just the reconstruction of the Nicollet, Portland, and 12th Avenue bridges. And you can see that there was an, a look at it from both the users statewide, commuters, local residents that live in the area, and then local minority or low income residents. And trying to give a very thorough look at what the impacts of each of these elements of this project would be. And then, as I said, this would be used as MINDOT prepares an implementation plan for the 494 Vision project. So what I would love to do right now is show you what that proposed next first project is gonna be, but that is not quite developed yet. And at the end, I'll give you an update on the, the schedule. So you've seen this graphic many times. Talking again, that back in June, we talked about, one of the big decisions that have been made was that kind of a, a securement that the access consolidation would happen, or access reconfiguration would happen at Portland Avenue and that's access at 12th Avenue and at Nicollet Avenue to 494 would go away. And at that time, we had not quite narrowed down what the, what the interchange would look like. There's been a lot of evaluation of the operational analysis and other impacts of all five of the options. And the TAC has settled on a preferred alternative as the Tight Diamond Interchange. The Tight Diamond Interchange is labeled as the TDI. And you can see that it has definitely the, the lowest footprint. All of the options had somewhat similar impacts to access to right of way, to private property parcels as far as access or, or needing of some additional right of way. And those are, those are just highlighted with the little red closed boxes, so closure of an access point or a change of an access point. But operationally, the Tight Diamond Interchange is the one where we think it would be the best fit for this location. And that's probably the most traditional interchange type that was looked at. I guess you'll see the graphic on the, the bottom right is not very fully formed, but I just wanted to put that out there to show that we, we had some work being done, a study for the, by the Congress of New Urbanism, the CNU. They were helping to provide some guidance on potential redevelopment of the, the Portland Avenue interchange area after the MINDOT's project is completed. And unfortunately, that study did get kind of held up by COVID, as many things have. One thing that they did bring forward was just the request that some consideration be given to, to looking at ways to somewhat diffuse the amount of traffic that could be up, that would be convening at Portland Avenue. And while we're quite a ways along in the process, just wanted to point out that this, that this has come up a little bit, and that MINDOT is gonna give some, some consideration to it. What they're proposing is that the ramps be set back a little bit on both the east and west side from Portland, Portland Avenue. We have a few concerns with that, but I think that it's, it's still a good time to look at a lot of different options. Richfield is very interested in having this pursued further, so I just wanted to make sure that this is on the, the radar of the city council that this has come up. So then, lastly, one of the big issues that we've been working on with the study is focus on connectivity and keeping this area suitable for, for all modes, pedestrian and cyclists as well. And we know that this, there's been a lot of analysis to show what the pedestrian demand is in this area, and this is one of our highest pedestrian demand areas in the city of Bloomington. Connection between Richfield and Bloomington is pretty critical. And so we want to make sure that the changes to the system will provide an opportunity to preserve and enhance this connectivity for all users. We have a pedestrian and bike group that's been meeting with some additional meetings. And there's representatives from MINDOT, Hennepin County, City of Bloomington. We, Bloomington, we have our public health, a public health representative. And so we're really trying to take a look at what are the needs in this area and make sure that the cross-sections, even if they're just being used for cost estimate purposes at this time, that they're, that they're accurate enough to address what we think are the reasonable pedestrian and bike needs. And so I just wanted to flip through these, even though they are not the clearest graphics to take a look at, but just to highlight the fact that what, what consideration we have given to each of these potential crossing locations. So Nicollet Avenue is gonna look a lot different when there's no more ramp connections, and this will be a much more pedestrian and bike friendly crossing location. And so we have on-road bike lanes to the south, south of American Boulevard in Bloomington. They go all the way down to Old Shakopee Road, actually, then they come onto our local system, go down to 102nd Street. Richfield also has some bike amenities on the north side as well. And so the, the talk, what we're proposing for a cross-section on, this would be to have a nice wide pedestrian amenity on the west side of the bridge. A six-foot bike lane or shoulder, and then our vehicle travel lanes, which will be either two or three lanes. They're still working on a little bit of the modeling on what that final cross-section will look like. And then a bike lane for the northbound, bike lane or shoulder for the northbound bikes. And then a little bit wider on that pedestrian feature on the, on the east side. And that was based on the comments from, Three Rivers Park District has identified a search corridor in this area, and we just want to make sure that, you know, we get one shot at building this bridge. And if there's gonna be a potential regional park connection in this area, we want to make sure that we're providing a safe or enough space for that to happen at some point in the future. Portland Avenue, I think the most important thing to take a look at here, we're still working on the number of vehicle lanes that would be needed through this area, but it is gonna be a pretty wide cross-section on, on what's needed to serve all of the traffic that's gonna be moving over to Portland Avenue. This is also something that connects to on-road and off, or on-road bike facilities, both south of American Boulevard and north of 77th Street. And so we wanted to make sure that we are addressing the needs of cyclists that would be using this area along with the pedestrians. But going through a freeway interchange is a very high-stress experience for most cyclists. And so what Hennepin County, MINDOT, and the cities are looking at right now is, this would be a cycle track. So you'd have the sidewalk, then a buffer, and then a cycle track is where the cyclists would be up at a curb height, so they'd not be level with the vehicle travel lanes, but up with the bike pedestrian trail level, but it would be a separated facility separated from the pedestrians. So that's what's being looked at for Portland Avenue. 12th Avenue is also gonna be a very different experience than it currently is. So it's going to be low stress from the standpoint that there won't be any freeway ramps. But currently, with the regional park going through here, and, or the regional trail going through here, there's a completely separated facility for bikes and peds. And that is, that bridge structure was put in not knowing exactly when the 494 project was gonna happen. And so it is, it was known to not be wide enough to accommodate future 494 widening. So that separate bridge structure goes away, and amenities for bikes and peds are to be incorporated into this 12th, 12th Avenue crossing. And so you can see that we're looking at where the trail crossing currently is, is on the west side of the bridge. So adding a, it's actually ends up being about a 12-foot section, or 12 to 14-foot section on the west side with a barrier, and then some on-road bike and shoulder, as well as a new sidewalk on the east side. Lastly, I'm gonna talk about pedestrian bridges. So currently, there is a pedestrian bridge at Second Avenue. We kind of lovingly call it the, oh, now I forgot what, what we call it. Okay, it's a relatively low-use ped bridge, but it, and it doesn't, it, it is a bit hidden away, so it's, it's a little bit harder to, to see it. Hard for, we, it's not currently ADA compatible. And so we know that there's some pedestrian demand in that area. It's hard to measure exactly what that demand is, though, given the, the condition of it. But they, so we're not basing decisions solely on the current usage, but also looked at a little bit more of the streetlight data patterns related to pedestrians. And the decision is that the condition of that existing pedestrian bridge, while it is not ADA accessible, it's in fairly good condition, and it is of adequate width to span even if they do, or when they do widening of 494. And so at this point, the proposal is to not touch that bridge, to, to leave it as is, and kind of deal with it in the future when the condition does warrant making some decisions on whether it is needed or not. But rather, looking at the existing pedestrian counts in the area and the, the streetlight data, we can see that there is a significant pedestrian demand over between 12th Avenue and Portland Avenue, near the alignment of Chicago Avenue. And so this is a, what you see on the drawing is a proposed new pedestrian bridge. We originally, or it was originally looked at where the bridge crossing itself would happen at 12th Avenue. But this, this version was based on comments that it's actually more important to have the, the entry points to the bridge line up with Chicago than it is to have the actual bridge itself. And so you'll see on the Richfield side, it's quite a, quite a ramp up to get up to the pedestrian bridge. On the Bloomington side, this option that's shown here is just one of the options, and it actually shows a ramp down to the east to Chicago, and also a ramp down to the west that would be close to. That would be close to the Walmart. We know that all of these, and any new ped bridge in this area, there would definitely be some sidewalk or trail connectivity that needs to be made on the local sides as well. And so the pink is representing new sidewalk or new trail that would connect to that. So I just wanted to make sure that the council is aware that we're looking at the potential for a new pedestrian bridge at Chicago Avenue. You know, I wanted to say just a couple more things about this ped bridge. Aside from the, the fact that in the long term, we, we project that this would have very good use. It's also considered an important feature for the phasing of the actual reconstruction of 12th Avenue, Portland and Nicollet Bridges. During that time, there really is not going to be a good detour route or good or fair detour route for pedestrians. And so if, if there's a potential that this could be constructed ahead of closure, you know, long-term closure of Portland Avenue, that would really help to serve the needs of the, the walking, biking community in this area as well. So next steps, MINDOT and their project team to continue to move forward on this study. So the reason that the interchange type at 49, or at Portland needed to be worked out and we need to look closely at the amenities of the 494 crossings is that they're, they're currently working on, or finishing up cost estimates for all of the elements. And to, to really prepare a good implementation plan, they have to have some very accurate cost estimates. I want to point that they're, point out that as they work on their cost estimates, they're also working on their cost estimates for local agency participation. And we haven't seen any of that, but I anticipate seeing that very soon. Whoops, I'm sorry. So tomorrow is the next Policy Advisory Committee meeting. They're going to be presenting all, a lot of the same information that I just did a quick overview of will be presented at that Policy Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow. Councilmember Beloga is the, the Bloomington Council Representative for that working group. We believe that we will start to see the implementation plan in early January. And then they have scheduled three meetings to work through that from the Technical Advisory Group. And then bringing that to, again, to the Policy Advisory Committee in late February. So big, that's kind of the fine tune, next three month schedule, but I think big picture, it's important to point out that still looking at their first build project to be out for design, build and award in 2022 with construction starting in 2023. I have some good news in that Bloomington helps secure another $11 million in funding for the interchange project with a successful application for Minnesota Highway Freight Improvement Funds. We were just notified of that on Thursday. So I think our main goal in pursuing those and in funding is just Bloomington, to demonstrate Bloomington's continued support and for this regional transportation improvement. And that we are continuing to, to work to do whatever it will take to, to help MINDOT deliver a good, solid product that's going to really help benefit all of the residents of Bloomington. That's, that's it. And the reason I put my email on here is I know that the listening public has not had the, the same opportunity to have all of the, you know, every three to six months of updates throughout this project process. If anybody has any questions, they certainly can reach out to me at my email. And I will try to answer them. And if I don't have the answers, I'll get them in contact with the right people with MINDOT to, to answer. And I'm happy to answer any council questions.
Well, very good. First of all, thank you for the presentation, the information. Secondly, well done on the $11 million. That's nice to hear. Anything we can do to continue to move this forward, I think is, is a positive thing. So thanks for doing that. Very well done.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Beloga, anything to add as a member of the Policy Advisory Committee here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the Policy Advisory Committee has not met for, well, since summertime. And I think we've had an update from Amy now twice since the last Policy Advisory Committee. So I would be more able to give you additional comments following next, the next PAC meeting, which is tomorrow.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for that notification. And yeah, maybe we'll, we'll look for it. We'll see what comes of that meeting and decide if we, we need another update on this, if there's anything else to add to this. Counsel, any questions? Of Ms. Marone here? If not, thank you for the updates. Thanks for sticking with us into the late end of the night here. I appreciate it. And thanks for your work on this. I know this is a, this is what we like to call playing the long game here. This is a, a long-term process and appreciate the, your leadership on it and your work on this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Counsel, let's move on to item 9.4, the City Council Policy and Issues Update. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I do not have any additional information to share with you tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Counsel, anything to share? Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every year in this time of year, council has considered for the last 25 years extra time off for city staff. City staff otherwise would work all day, New Year's, or Christmas Eve. And I would suggest that particularly in this year, where the stresses on staff have been enormous, working from home and trying to do their job, be parents, be educators and all the other things that not only city staff has, but many of our residents have encountered. That an additional extra one-half day off for Christmas Eve is appropriate. And in saying so, I would make that as a motion.
I can't.
Councilmember Beloga has moved that we grant staff a half day off on December 24th, seconded by Councilmember Carter. I wholeheartedly concur and agree. I think this is one of the very nice things that, one of the very least things that we can do for our staff who do outstanding work throughout the year. And I'm always happy to grant this little extra time off for them to spend time with their families, especially on Christmas Eve. And as Councilmember Beloga said, it's been, it's been a tricky year for everybody. And I'm more than happy to do this, this year. Counsel, any, any additional comments or questions on this? If not, we've got a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Carter to grant staff a half day of vacation on December 24th. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Manderscheid, did I say that correctly?
Mayor members, yes, I think sometimes Chris Wilson makes some clarifying comments, but I'm not seeing her say anything. So I think it must be good to go.
We are good to go. I just got the thumbs up from down the table. We have a motion in a second. No further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga? Carter?
Hi.
Coulter?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Mayor Bussie?
Hi. Motion carries 6-0. So once again, thanks to our staff and enjoy it and it's well deserved. So thank you much for your work throughout the course of this year.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and councilmembers, on behalf of the staff, thank you very much for the generosity. We never take for granted that the, the council will do this every year. So your, your comments are appreciated and we'll make sure that they are shared with the staff tomorrow. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, anything additional to add for item 9.4, City Council Policy and Issue Update? Anyone else? Seeing no one coming forward, counsel, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Hi.
Carter?
Hi.
Coulter?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Mayor Bussie?
Hi. Motion carries 6-0. We are adjourned. Thank you to everybody who tuned in this evening for this very important meeting. Thanks to our staff for the great work that you put in. Thanks to our council for the time and effort that you've put into this as well. So thank you all very much. Everybody, please stay healthy, stay safe, and we'll see you again very soon. Thank you. Good night.